I invite all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Our first item on our ceremonial agenda is a Parks and Recreation Proclamation in celebration of Parks and Recreation Month. Is our Parks and Rec Director here? Us. Joanne McGreeney, welcome. Joanne, would you like to say something?
Yes, I have some of members of our staff here this evening. Hold on. Oh, sure. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joanne McGreeney. I'm Director of Parks and Recreation and we have some of our amazing, truly dedicated staff that serve this community, maintain our parks, our park rangers, our golf course, our urban forest, and of course beloved programs and services that we offer through our recreation program as well. So just wanted to say thank you and we're so grateful for you to recognize Parks and Recreation Month this month for us and so appreciate them all attending as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready? Do you want me to read the proclamation first or?
Oh, you're standing up for just a moment. So we're ready. Got it.
Wait, this one's not working.
I'm so happy all of you are here to be the audience. Parks make life better. Happy Birthday!
I'm so happy to see all of you here. I can look across your faces. I'm like, this person taught my kid how to swim. This person was the one who held my kid's hand when they were scared to, you know, go to camp for the first time. So it means a lot to give this proclamation as mayor. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of San Mateo, whereas Parks and Recreation agencies provide outlets for physical activities, social interaction, and stress-reducing experiences. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and overall well-being. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as after-school programs, youth sports, preschool education are critical to early childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, and the entire community, which positively impacts the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of our community. And whereas, San Mateo residents have access to some of the most desirable recreational amenities on the peninsula, which includes Central Park, the Japanese Garden, Poplar Creek Golf Course, and the Bearisford Senior and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Centers. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Mayor of City of San Mateo, on behalf of the city council, I do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations. Okay. Our next ceremonial item is to honor the contributions of Neighborhood Watch and the Neighborhood Watch Board of Directors. I would like to invite our Neighborhood Watch Board of Directors Representative, Rick Sacuta.
Giving it over to me. Thank you for having us. I'll just put my stuff down here. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, as most of you know, my name is Janine Luna and I'm the Community Relations Officer for the San Mateo Police Department. As one of my ancillary duties, I'm also the Neighborhood Watch Program Coordinator. Thank you for having me and my team of Board of Directors here tonight. With me, I have Joe Grishanek, Rick Sacuta, Donna Devote. I'll go to Victor Lescap first, and our three newest Board of Director members, Elizabeth Barton, Tom Lees, and Merrick Walter. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're here to recognize the success of our program, one of which is the largest in the county, but also to recognize a few of you here who have been giving your time serving as Board Members on our Board of Directors over the past several years. We decided a city council meeting was a fitting place to recognize these former members, as the recent city council redistricting and election was the reason we lost two of our beloved members. Both Councilmember Lees, or I should say Deputy Mayor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Lisa Diaz-Nash and Councilmember Rich Hedges have served on our board for many years and both of them are extremely active in promoting the mission of Neighborhood Watch. They both had to step down from our board to join council, but remained steadfast in their dedication to the safety and security of our neighborhoods. Earlier last year, two other board members, Marlene Mason, who is also here tonight, and Suzanne Flecker Bonilla, who unfortunately couldn't make it, also had to step down for personal reasons. We have yet been able to recognize their years of service to Neighborhood Watch, so with your permission, we'd like to present Councilmembers Diaz-Nash and Hedges and Mrs. Mason with plaques of recognition for the time and efforts devoted to our Neighborhood Watch program and to ensuring our San Mateo neighborhoods remain safe for all who live, work, and play in this beautiful city. So with your permission, if you guys want to come down.
Permission granted.
As well as Marlene Mason. And then you have Hedges, and then who has? Thank you so much for your time and service. Marlene, come on down here. I'm gonna talk about it. Give me two more seconds and I'll tell you all about it. Jump in again. But if I could, go ahead. Thank you for all the time you've given me and our fellow members of the Board of Directors and for remaining active block captains and liaisons to those in your area who rely on you to maintain our public police-community collaboration. So thank you very much for that. As the Deputy Mayor mentioned, National Night Out is coming, so if you'll indulge me just a few minutes longer. Along the line of police-community collaboration, I'd like to remind our residents about National Night Out. On Tuesday evening, August 1st, the PD will be hosting a free public event at the King Center from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. We'll have various city departments, our Police Activities League, various nonprofits, and national sponsors of the event like ADT and Starbucks Tabling. There'll be music, fun and games, resources. We'll also have a raffle and some snacks, goodies, things like that. So it's a free event. Please make sure you can come out if you don't have a block event of your own to attend. And for those of you interested in registering a block event with the police department, if you do that, we will send police and city service staff to your event to talk to you about safety, and bring some goodies for the kids. So if you're interested in registering, our deadline for a block event registration is next Monday, July 24th. And whether you have questions or not for National Night Out or Neighborhood Watch in general, you can contact me at neighborhoodwatch@cityof sanmateo.org or check out our web pages for that information.
Janine, we have a captive audience. Do you want to present opportunities for anyone who might be interested in becoming a block captain? How to do that?
Yes. I'll turn around to talk to all of you here. Neighborhood Watch is growing. We have about 250 block captains in the city alone, so it's pretty large in the county. If any of you have an interest in, sorry, if any of you have an interest in starting a Neighborhood Watch block or just finding out more information about whether or not your area is actually active already, you can email me, ovalley@cityofsanmateo.org, or through National, I'm sorry, I'm getting the two events confused now and I'm ill today, so bear with me, neighborhoodwatch@cityofsanmateo.org. But through the PD portal on the city's webpage, there is links for both Neighborhood Watch and National Night Out for more information. Or, my board members are more than willing to talk to you guys, so grab them. A lot of them are from your area. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Hedges?
I just wanted to say, our slogan is, if you see something, say something.
Absolutely. If you see something, say something. And we work really well with our community and we have solved a lot of crime because of you.
And if I could, through the mayor's, please. And for all of you, an incentive to sign up to host your own block party on the first, not only might you see a police officer or a fire official, but the canine dogs come out. And that is absolutely the hit of the night, so.
We do try and share our personnel at all the block events we have. There's usually a lot of them, so we try to make it to each of them.
That's right. So, please, please, please sign up.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Our third and last ceremonial item is to recognize National Disabilities Awareness Month. And I believe that we have our San Mateo Union High School District Board Trustee, wonderful, Leah Andrade Zuniga, here to accept our proclamation. And unfortunately, Leah was not able to attend in person, but she is an exceptional disabilities leader and leader in our community. And I wanted, for the benefit of everyone in this audience, to get to know her a little bit more by sharing some background on her. So Leah Andrade Zuniga is a strong leader and activist committed to educating and empowering young people of color with disabilities around higher education, reproductive justice, civil rights, and independent living philosophy and disabilities justice. For over 20 years, she has served on many commissions, boards, and committees such as the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women, Teen Pregnancy Prevention Coalition of San Mateo County Board of Directors, Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities Board of Directors, San Mateo County Health Commission, California State Independent Living Council, San Mateo County Public Authority Advisory Committee, and others. The list goes on. Leah has also served as a Commissioner for the San Mateo County Commission on Disability since 2013. In 2020, she was elected to the San Mateo Union High School District Board of Trustees. And following her spinal cord injury in 2009, Leah has been a peer supporter through the Santa Clara Valley Medical Center SCI Peer Support Program, the Santa Clara Valley Medical Center Northern California Consortium. And Leah holds a bachelor's degree in human services with an emphasis in administration and counseling and a master's degree in public administration from Notre Dame University in Belmont, California. Leah is a parent of two college students and two cats named Simon and Garfunkel. Leah, we're so pleased to have you here tonight. I will read the proclamation and then if you would like to share some remarks, please go ahead. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, was signed into law on July 26th in 1990 to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas this month, our community recognizes the importance of providing accommodations and opportunities for people with disabilities in all areas of public life. And whereas, for 33 years, this historic civil rights law has protected the rights of people with disabilities and guarantees equal opportunity in employment, transportation accommodations, telecommunications services, and access to state and local governments. And whereas, the city of San Mateo affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth for the state of California as embodied in the ADA. And whereas, as barriers and discrimination continue to impact people with disabilities, numerous organizations in San Mateo County work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA. And now, therefore, the city council, the city of San Mateo, hereby recognizes July 26, 2023, as Americans Disability Act Awareness Day, and they're hereby grant greetings and blessings wishes to all observing National Disabilities Awareness Month. Thank you. And Leah, please go ahead and share your thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this proclamation. I wanted to read a quote by Mia Migas, a really exceptional activist in our community. Says, "Access for the sake of access or inclusion is not necessarily liberatory, but access done in the service of love, justice, connection, and community is liberatory and has the power to transform." Thank you so much again. You know, proclamations are great, but we can't stop there. We need to follow it up with action. And action will be the one to change perceptions and different attitudes towards disability. Unfortunately, we still have a lot of ableism in our world and in our society, but the point of all of this is to change that and move forward. Yes, the ADA was passed July 26, 1990, approximately 33 years ago, but there are still things that the ADA does not support and does not remedy. So I really would encourage everybody to join the disabled community in helping us to get over those barriers and change some of the things that are still happening in our communities, to make everything inclusive for everybody. I wanted to also mention that July 27th at Red Morton Park at 11:00 a.m. is the annual Inclusion Festival that we put on with the Commission on Disabilities. The Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities always is looking for board members, so we really need some help. We meet from 12:30 to 2:00. Sorry, the Commission on Disabilities, we meet the third Thursday of every month from 3:00 to 5:00 on El Amido de los Bogos. And you can get information on all of this stuff through the different websites. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. And I really do appreciate the comment about not simply using our words, but measuring our values and our actions. And for me, it was very important when we were going through the effort to establish the largest affordable housing project in the city of San Mateo, Kikue Crossing, that the city worked in partnership with Housing Choices, an advocacy organization that serves folks with developmental disabilities, to make sure that there were designations and set aside units specifically for those community members who want to live independently. And so thinking about housing options in the housing crisis and how that impacts all community members, and particularly and most acutely for those suffering from disabilities and living with disabilities, that the city has an obligation to consider those needs in our spectrum of affordable housing strategies. And so I was really happy to see that happen. And if it weren't for advocates like yourself and organizations like Housing Choices, that work would not be done. And so we do rely on your voices. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Lee, for your engagement and your advocacy always.
Okay, so thank you, Leah. And we are ready to move on to our consent calendar. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number five, Personnel Board and Park and Recreation Commission Subcommittee's appointment recommendation. And through the mayor, I'll just note that we will offer pending council action, the oath of office to the newly appointed commissioners after the vote has been completed for the consent calendar in its entirety. Item number six, juvenile diversion program case management services amendments. Item number seven, public safety radio communication base station equipment agreement and amendment. Item number eight, racial equity art project agreement. Item number nine, below-market rental rates, sales prices, and unit community priorities 2023 revisions. Item number 10, 3150 South Delaware Street, Bay Meadows Station 5, public improvements acceptance. Item number 11, Basin E sanitary sewer improvement project agreement. Item number 12, citywide street rehabilitation package 4B project agreement. Item number 13, wastewater treatment plant upgrade engineering services during construction contingency increase. Item number 14, wastewater treatment plant upgrade construction services contingency increase. Item number 15, wastewater treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition monitoring and upgrade project agreement. Item number 16, community development department and police department job specification updates. Item number 17, senior catered lunch services rendered for fiscal year 2022/2023 and fiscal years 2023 through 2026, new agreement and amendment. Item number 18, East Hillsdale Park Professional Consultant Services Agreement Amendment. Item number 19, Bay Meadows Community Facilities District Special Tax Levy for fiscal year 2023/24. Item number 20, Enterprise Resource Planning System Replacement Amendment. Item number 21, Investment Advisory Services Amendment. And finally, item number 22, intent to initiate Proposition 218 process for stormwater fee, balloting procedures, and fee report approval.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Madam Mayor, I have no in-person on the consent calendar comments. I do have one hand raised on Zoom. And Michael Grubb, please go ahead.
Yes, hello. My name's Michael Grubb. I live in San Mateo. And first, I would say we support the historic designation and protections of the city council for neighborhoods. I'm addressing item number eight, which is regarding the racial equity art project. When many of you ran for city council, you stated that public safety was your number one priority. I do not feel safe in my neighborhood due to the traffic and to the impunity which makes people violate the traffic laws. I have requested that the city install speed bumps, stop signs, and blinking light pedestrian crossings. My first request was made in December and I have made several since then. As of today, seven months since my first inquiry, I have heard nothing, even though I have followed up with voicemails to the city public works, other than that my requests were received and a quote "study" those quote would be done. For the new city manager, I hope you will note the lack of responsiveness from those in the city for whom the taxpayers pay their salaries. I now see the city has allocated $500,000 for an art project and item number eight allocates $200,000 for a painting on the street. If public safety is your number one priority, why would this money not be used and allocated to public safety? $500,000 would pay to hire and equip two motorcycle police officers who can patrol the streets and write tickets for the people who blatantly speed through the neighborhoods, run stop signs, and run red lights and do so with impunity. $500,000 would pay for multiple speed bumps and for lighted crosswalks. Where is your sense of fiscal responsibility? Since the city seems to have an extra $500,000, and I don't know how this can be when surplus had to be tapped to close the budget, please use this money for something tangible that will benefit everyone, and that is an example of inclusiveness, and show tangible results. Painting a picture on the street is neither. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no other speakers.
Thank you. For the purposes of community education, perhaps I could ask our interim city manager to address our community art fund and the allocation. Sure. There's a special fund that is made up of money that's
Sure. There's a special fund that is made up of money that's specifically contributed for public art, and that's the funding source that is used for this specific project. It's designated for this specific purpose and can't be used for other purposes. And it is made up of developer fees from private development.
Thank you so much for further clarification there. I see so many blue shirts with the word floods. I was surprised we didn't get one agenda item pulled. Do we want to read them?
Through the mayor, if I could, they're here to speak under public comment for items not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Does it make sense? Does anyone want to pull that item just for the purposes of education?
I wasn't going to pull it, but yeah, we could pull it for the purposes of education. I would say that blue is my favorite color.
These are very important council topics, our favorite colors. Thank you. So, yes, Councilmember Lorraine.
Well, on the on the topic of pulling this item for educational purposes, I do I look forward to hearing the comments for all the folks who have gathered here tonight. But I do feel that one of the ways this city is trying to make sure we shore up our infrastructure for storm water in the future is on this consent agenda. We've had we had a meeting previously, a number of folks who I believe are in the room were here for that meeting as well. And I just hope that we can that there will be sufficient interest and enthusiasm in pushing for that measure to be passed, because I think it'll help achieve the goals that we share. Thank you.
Madam, through the mayor, if I could, I believe we've got consent calendar items four through 21 to vote on. And then I understood, if I understood correctly, that we're polling item 22 for comments. So we should take the first action.
Thank you for keeping us on track, Madam Clerk. So
Make a motion?
Yes, please. I would like to call for a motion, and we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Great.
Thank you for consent calendar items four through 21. Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. And so I think Councilmember Lorraine began sort of starting out with framing some of the issues and intent behind this agenda item, which is the the storm water initiative. And does it make sense to have a little bit of a summary of the item for those of us in the room before we discuss?
So I'll give just a short summary, and then perhaps our interim city manager or our public works director can chime in. So this is the beginning of a process. It states an intent to initiate the process to enact a storm water fee. And what it does is it approves a fee report that explains the basis for establishing the fee, and adopt the balloting procedures, and it sets a tentative date of October 16, 2023, to hold a public hearing in which there will be a determination as to whether there's a majority protest. And if not, then the council could, at that time, authorize the issuing of mailed ballots to property owners throughout the city, which is required under the California Constitution, namely in Proposition 218. So this is really the beginning of the process. There will be multiple opportunities to provide comments, certainly in October, and then also throughout the process. And then the end of the voting process will result in tabulation of the ballots before the council, which would occur perhaps in December 2023 or January 2024.
Thank you. And so I'll just add to that. You know, in on on New Year's Eve last year, the entire Bay Area was inundated with a catastrophic storm. In some places in the city of San Mateo, it was measured to be a 200-year event. And our infrastructure is sorely inadequate to handle that event and any future event. And we know with the impacts of climate change that these events will continue and probably likely increase. My first action as mayor was to start a storm relief fund. I raised over $50,000 in under a week, and led the city to designate $150,000 to create a city storm fund. That city storm fund helped bring resources back to impacted community members, residents, and businesses ahead of FEMA without the red tape. And and we know that it was a drop in the bucket, and that that storm and all storms that we anticipate in the future, many of which will be as extreme, if not more extreme, will likely cost lives and cause, you know, significant, you know, millions of dollars in damages, in lost wages for our businesses, as well as property damage. We had incredible strain on the system and our operations as a city. And and over many years, the Marina Lagoon community has been asking, demanding, and begging for attention and resources to dredge the lagoon. That has been a designated council priority that I led the first year that I joined the council, and it was ultimately adopted. And the intent right now is to address some of these unfunded needs. Right now, there is no dedicated funding for for the to meet the need of our stormwater system. And so we are falling behind. And without dedicated funding, we will continue to fall more behind. So the effort that we are undertaking right now is to is to pull resources, to ask the community to support a stormwater fee that would help bring us closer to meeting that need, including dredging the lagoon. So it's really wonderful to see all of you here tonight, and elevating and bringing more visibility and public education to the fact that our stormwater systems are citywide infrastructure that need attention, and that flooding is not just an issue of the east side. It is a citywide issue that deserves citywide resources. And so that's my position on this. I'm eager to hear from community and if anyone else wants to weigh in.
This has been something I've been working on, starting with the FEMA money to get our neighborhoods out of FEMA. And I urge everybody to read the stormwater fee study. I think it's important. It's important on how the money is allegedly talked about dividing up for infrastructure. We know that what's proposed to go out for is not adequate to do everything we need to do, but it's a beginning. So stay educated on this. Stay involved, as I see you are tonight, because it's so important. Involvement really distillates what we eventually do. So thanks a lot. I'm so happy to see you all here.
Madam Mayor, we do have one speaker on this topic. Item number 22.
Wonderful. Let us invite the speaker.
If we could have Alex Kuria-Godiggy.
Thank you. My name is Alexander Czerkowitski. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I will speak later as well. My home, street, and neighborhood flooded last winter. I think the effort you just made to pretend that you're doing something is sad and pathetic. Last time we were here and spoke, one member of this council, after we spoke, said, quote, "I'm not interested at this time." And $50,000 doesn't even cover the damage at my home. We need to do more. We need to do more aggressive. Now, we're not naive. We know the city needs money to fund projects. But too little, too slow, isn't good enough. And the study that you're citing for the stormwater fee, we do not believe was equitable and inclusive. We think you should redo it and make sure that you're covering all the neighborhoods in San Mateo. You need to be doing a better job. And believe me, we're here to tell you tonight that you're not doing a good job. And don't try to take this off the agenda to delay the message that's coming to you soon. Thank you.
I'm sorry. We don't comment. We don't we don't cheer. We don't clap. We don't do any of that in this chamber when we are having a formal meeting. This is a way of respecting the process, that everyone has an opportunity to come up and speak, and you'll all have your choice or your chance to come up and do that. But we don't. We try and keep it really civil, so we don't dampen anyone else's opinion or ability to come up and speak, especially if they're a different opinion. So I'm going to ask you not to applaud, or boo, or hiss, or anything like that. Just let the speakers take their piece. Okay? Thank you. Okay, thank. Yes, please.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just want to clarify a statement I may have made last time with regard to what the gentleman was just discussing. It's not that I'm not interested in discussing how we can improve our stormwater infrastructure. I am very interested in that. That is why I was an interested participant in this ongoing discussion to get this stormwater fee started, first as a Sustainability and Infrastructure Commissioner for multiple years, and now here on in council chambers. Part of the reason why I'm interested in that is because it's really the first time that, as the mayor mentioned, we're raising money specifically to make sure that we start shoring up decades of delayed action on our stormwater infrastructure. And it will begin to raise money relatively quickly. If we can get this ballot measure passed this year, we'll start collecting money next year. And that money will begin to go to projects, potentially citywide. This is not a stormwater fee measure that will only target certain parts of the city. It's a process that we've been working on for a number of years to try and get started as soon as possible. We, you know, the council had put forth a poll to get a sense from the public on whether we could go forward with this in 2022. The response was lukewarm. There were other ballot measures to consider. We passed a different measure that began to get funding for other unfunded priorities. This year is the year, and clearly, more clearly than ever before. You know, I'm glad that a number of people are here today to to speak on behalf of making sure we get this done. I just want to reiterate that I'm very interested in getting this stormwater fee utility passed. It may not raise all the money that we need to address everything at once, but it's an important step, as Councilmember Hedges mentioned. And I'm interested in really making a difference. We've already put considerable work into this stormwater fee report, and that's what I'm interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges?
I was going to move approval of item 22.
Okay, great.
Move approval of item 22 on a consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we want to swear in our new commissioners right now? Okay. Before we move to public comment on non-agenda items, we will be welcoming two new commissioners. Two?
Two new commissioners, Elizabeth De Winter for the Personnel Board, and Sandra Chiapi to the Park and Recreation Commission.
Congratulations.
And Deputy City Clerk Martin will swear them in.
All right. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Sirte.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
and I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda.
So, Madam Mayor, what we have is an organized presentation from interested parties from the flood, who have concerns about the floods. So they're representing multiple neighborhoods. We also have 20 additional speaker slips of individuals. So we'll need direction on timing for that.
How long is the organized presentation?
15.
Okay. So, council?
I'd like to give everybody two minutes.
Can you turn on your mic?
Councilmember Hedges suggested two minutes for the individual speakers. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. So first step, we'll do the organized presentation. And if you intend to speak on this item remotely, if you could please raise your hand now so we can get a more accurate count, that would be helpful. And if we could have the organized presentation come up with 15-minute timing. And I think Joe, Russ, Olivia, Rich, Alex, and Valerie are in the presentation.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Kraschenek. I've been a resident of San Mateo for 46 years. Tonight, we are here representing citizens from the entire San Mateo city. Collectively, we want to convey our deep concern that the city is not doing enough, fast enough, to address the threat of flooding. As you'll hear from the residents tonight, we believe it is the responsibility of this council to investigate and pursue all avenues to endorse the flooding risk in San Mateo. This includes taking steps right now and ahead of the upcoming winter, like cleaning the creeks and the culverts, preparing for the areas that are hotspots by having crews available that could go to them when there are drainages blocked, making sure that we have a long-term strategy, a long-term strategy for the entire flood prevention system, including the dredging of the lagoon. Most importantly, which will be stressed by my associates, the time to act is now, because winter is rapidly approaching. You and the city are moving too slowly, from what we've already heard this evening. And we want to see significant action in the days, the weeks, and the months ahead. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Russ Wilsher, a 33-year resident of San Mateo. I suffered a $30,000 loss on the storm of 1231 due to the flooding of the flood control basin. Many far worse storms with associated flooding are coming. An El Nino event is already An El Nino event is already fully entrenched in the South and East Pacific. This means historically high rainfall for California this winter. Water temperatures in the Pacific are at an all-time high. Another 100-year storm is brewing as we sit. As you know, our flood control basin was last dredged 42 years ago. That is nearly four decades of ignoring the Army Corps of Engineers' recommendations. Thus, the basin has lost 30% to 50% of its capacity to absorb rain runoff due to severe silt accumulation. San Mateo is now facing a yearly flood emergency. Last winter, we experienced a sneak preview of what is coming, not what may come. Without dredging, the basin is incapable of capturing torrential rainfall, and we are left with the inevitable series of catastrophic floods, this and every winter. I'm a captain for United Airlines. You and I have almost identical responsibilities. We both are entrusted by people to make hard decisions that protect those same people from harm's way, to keep them safe. You provide for your constituents, and I provide for my passengers. I'm accountable for the safety of 400 passengers. For you, it's thousands of residents. My actions are regulated by statutes which ensure that my passengers, like your constituents, are given a voice like mine here tonight. But there's one enormous exception, for both of us, an emergency. If we, as leaders, realize that an imminent emergency exists, we can use all available resources to create the safest possible outcome for those people who rely on us. Just like you, I'm held accountable to lead, make hard decisions, and act immediately when circumstances dictate. As a passenger, can you imagine an airline captain saying this to you? Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention? I have received information regarding a very serious situation. The aircraft that was ahead of us on our same course, with the same information, took no action and had a terrible outcome. Could you please ring your call button and provide me with your opinion on the best action for me to take? This would be preposterous and a profound dereliction of my duty. Time is of the essence, and I must make a command decision. So I don't take a survey, I take action, because emergencies require decisive and courageous leadership. Are you leaders? Our community is here to ask you to truly become leaders and take immediate action to save us from our next flooding emergency, which is looming on the horizon. Please initiate a plan to begin dredging our flood control basin and clear our creeks as soon as possible. The rain falls on everyone, but it has only one place to go, a lagoon with no room. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Olivia McNally. I have called our city home for 39 of my 41 years, and I grew up water skiing on this lagoon. Our parkside home neighborhood and street flooded last winter, and my boys ages two and five witnessed flooding and sewage in the only home they have ever known. Although I grew up on the lagoon and I live in parkside today, and I do believe dredging is vitally important, I'm here tonight to talk about other aspects of our flood prevention ecosystem in San Mateo. Members of our coalition have toured local creeks and culverts, and we are extremely dismayed by what we see right now, as referenced in the packet we shared. Have you toured the local creeks and culverts? Do you see what is looming? Our creeks are covered in overgrown bush, littered with broken logs and garbage, and filled with rocks and sediment. After what happened last winter, this is inexcusable, and action must be taken immediately for the safety of our city. At least, I repeat, at least, the city can do one thing and get the crews into those creeks and clean them out in preparation for this winter. My question to you and the city is, what are you waiting for? Are you waiting for another disaster to strike? Every minute you're not taking care of this is time we are wasting, community is growing tired of it. Furthermore, it's time to plan ahead for this winter. We've seen the modeling from the Schaefer-Willer Report, and the city knows exactly where the flooding is most likely to occur. My question to you is, what are you doing to prepare for the next flood? For example, is the city ready to preemptively close streets so that somebody doesn't drown again on 41st Avenue? Is the city considering sandbag stations closer to the areas most prone to flooding? Is the city considering purchasing sandbagging materials preemptively so we don't run out again? Is the city considering sending pumping trucks to flood-prone areas ahead of the storm to clean out the storm drains? Because mine is still sitting full. In sum, if you know where citizens are most at risk, and you don't have a place to, a plan in place to protect us, that's on you. We are here tonight to put you on notice, we are warning you of the risk, and we are coming here as your partners with ideas and proposed solutions, but you need to take us seriously. And again, what are you waiting for? We have T-minus 157 days until winter officially starts.
Hi, my name is Rich Krantz. I'm a recently retired United Airlines captain, 33-year resident of San Mateo, and my home severely flooded. I'd like to build on Olivia's comments, particularly the point about partnership. Over the last several weeks, I've been partnering with technical members of our community, former city manager with the Department of Public Works, to develop a standard operating procedure, an SOP, which unfortunately is currently lacking. Additionally, we have begun a dialogue in Foster City to gain insight from their dredging process and their dredging experiences. So we're the Marina Lagoon SOP Partnership, a very small, independent technical group. Over the next few weeks, in partnership with Public Works, we will collect information, we will draft, and then submit the SOP to Public Works for their review and approval and publication. While not typical for citizens to develop a document of this nature, we are happy to leverage our collective experience and knowledge and pitch in. We are only a few short months away from epic rains. Our safety and the safety of our neighbors is something we care deeply about. By assisting in this way, we can speed up the process, save the city both time and manpower. Our goal is to produce a clear, comprehensive document that we can implement before the coming storm season. We're also exploring with Public Works an idea to establish a very small, well-trained group of observers. These guys will be, or girls, women, will be watching over the pump station 24/7 during a rain event so that we can redeploy Public Works manpower to places they're really needed and not having to babysit and watch dials. They will not touch anything, they will only call Public Works if they sense a pump failure or some sort of a system malfunction. Lastly, always in three, the last thing is we propose to build for the city at no cost to you, a video-monitoring webcam that can be viewed by our friends and neighbors. This would promote confidence, would allow observation of the lagoon information during storms. We have in our group expertise of industrial process controls and real-time communication and monitoring. Again, this is not common practice, but we are willing to build a system for you at absolutely no cost. Please reach out to any of the five of us on the SOP committee if you want more information. We hope you can see the value of this, and this is kind of a great opportunity. Our mission, work together for safety in stormwater management. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Valerie O'Blath, and I'm a resident of San Mateo. Let's talk about long-term strategy and funding of the Marina Lagoon. Ah, we can't, because there hasn't been any in 42 years. Even today, seven months since a horrific storm flooded our neighborhoods, our city hasn't moved to pursue solutions that will keep us safe this winter. For example, one of the reasons that people are apprehensive about dredging is cost. Understandable, especially when the city's consultants put the price tag between $42 million and $80 million. But because the city and council hasn't in 42 years taken any action or responsibility to move dredging forward, you don't even know if those numbers are correct. But you're fortunate for one thing, you have us. We took it upon ourselves to see competitive bids to dredge the lagoon. In November 2022, we received an unsolicited cost to complete testing and dredging for $25 million. We advised members of council and the city, no response. You know, the city has a secret, and the city thinks it's safe with them, but no, 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 not the case, and I have no problem sharing with everyone here tonight. The city knows that the San Mateo Marina Lagoon is a ticking time bomb. 42 years of negligence, surrounded by properties which incurred thousands of dollars in damage this past winter. What will be lost this year? How many lives? And when that occurs, that falls on you. That will be your legacy. Because without dredging, and everyone in this room needs to hear this, the San Mateo Lagoon is a flood-controlled basin that does not have the capacity to withstand more river cyclone events. So I ask, and you think very carefully before you answer, what are you waiting for?
Hello. My name is Alex Circo-Guditsky. I was born in San Mateo, and I've lived here for 37 of my 41 years. My home, street, and neighborhood flooded last winter, as I said earlier. In college, I studied government and history, and I tend to believe in the power of government to accomplish good things, to land people on the moon, to build highways, and to bend the arc of social justice in the right direction. However, I stand here tonight with my friends and citizens behind me, extremely disappointed in my local government. I worry that you, our city council, have lost the plot. As the ongoing battle between NIMBY and YIMBY forces rages within our city, you're no longer focusing on what matters most, keeping people safe. That must end tonight. I don't wake up in the morning and define myself as a NIMBY or a YIMBY. I'm a husband and a dad, focused on protecting my family and my neighbors, and the vast, vast majority of citizens in this city feel the same way. Last winter, this city suffered a serious disaster. People died, homes were lost and severely damaged. Citizens are still trying to recover, and they are terrified it will happen again. And we're talking about solutions three years, five years from now? We need solutions now. And I ask you, can you honestly look yourselves in the mirror tonight and say you've made us materially safer in the last seven months? My assessment, along with everyone behind me, is no, and that, my friends, is on you. We've listened patiently across tens of city council meetings since the flood. You've discussed a plethora of issues at length for hours on end, many important, but many less so. And when it comes to flooding risk, the silence is telling. It's almost as if you're afraid to know the answers. This is an emergency. You need to take meaningful action now, yesterday. Develop a serious and detailed flood response plan. Do we even have one in this city? We've done the research, it doesn't look like it. Cross-train departments to work together and mobilize when needed. When my street flooded, I didn't see a single police officer, a single firefighter, we had to call for three days to get Public Works out there. That's not right. Release emergency funding to hire more Public Works staff. They need help. We're not blaming them, they need help. Clean up creeks and culverts, begin the process of dredging the lagoon, and ask for accountability up and down city government. What are you waiting for? What are you waiting for? God forbid we experience another flood in the near future, but hear this, if your collective inaction continues, and I'm not singling out any single person, this is a collective issue across the city, the next flood will wash away more than property, it will wash away your reelection hopes, and you will have to live with the consequences of your inactions. Thank you, and we're begging you to move faster.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the public comment for items not on the agenda in the council chambers. And I see one hand raised on Zoom at this time. The timer will be set at two minutes. The next three speakers, if you could come and line up along this wall so we could move through expeditiously, that would be great. So the first speaker coming up is Lori Watanuki, followed by Diane Whitaker, and then Michael Dillon.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the city council. My name is Lori Watanuki, and I live in the Central Neighborhood, and served on the Public Works Commission. This evening, I'd like to talk about a topic called historic districts. The Baywood neighborhood qualifies as a historic district, and the general impression is that Baywood's historic character has been commented on since 1989, and other consultants warranted a further study and evaluation as a historic district. Two architectural firms have concluded that Baywood does meet the criteria on the National Register. A study has identified a small number of properties that are individually eligible. The nomination process is not an easy process to qualify for individually, and I can attest to that. The cost for individual determination is prohibitively expensive. It is rigorous and will not protect the integrity of the neighborhood. The priority for historic surveys in other San Mateo neighborhoods will depend on neighborhood interest, funding, integrity, and threat from development. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Diane Whitaker, followed by Michael Dillon, and then Sandra Dillon.
Still counting. Should I wait till it gets? Go. Good evening, Mayor Lee, Deputy Mayor Nash, and fellow council members. Diane Whitaker, 30-year resident of North Central. I am a California-licensed architect and previously served for nine years on the San Mateo Planning Commission. Historic determination is not something that should be debated. It is an objective analysis, not subjective. Federal and state laws specify the necessary criteria to achieve this designation. Rules and regulations that apply to a historic district already exist in San Mateo. They are the general plan, the zoning code, planning documents, and building codes, which are regularly and routinely implemented by current city staff. I would like to dispel some common myths. Historic designation does allow homeowners to extensively remodel or alter the interior or the rear of their home. Historic designation does allow the addition of a second story. Also, accessory dwelling units can be added to a home as well as solar panels. The goal is to maintain the existing architectural design and materials as viewed from the street. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Dillon, followed by Sandra Dillon, and then Sonia Nazal.
My name is Mike Dillon. I live on the lagoon. I've lived there for 55 years. I spoke last time. I told you we had an emergency situation at the time, and I told you we didn't need no anything else, but I see you guys really doing the right thing, and we're going to do something in October. October's going to come, and then we're going to have people that have talked, and they're going to give us a, they're going to tell you things, and then you're going to have to get a committee, and nothing's going to get done. I said it, it's an emergency situation. You have emergency funds. It's going to happen. The winter is here, it's going to be a bad winter, and people are going to be hurt. But what really blows me away is nothing has been done at all. Dredging the lagoon, 40, only 40 years late, that's all. It's way out of line. We're into overtime, overtime. I know how it works. I've worked for three other cities. I know how it works. But all you got to do is do your job. It's an emergency situation, and the citizens need your protection. It absolutely got me very upset to listen to these poor, poor people that were, just were just overwhelmed with the flood, and the flood is really bad. They need help, and they need you to help them.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sandra Dillon, followed by Sonia Nazal, and then Ryan Moraguchi.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Dillon. I've lived on the Marina Lagoon since 1967. I have a handout for all of you. This is a brochure that went out in 2022, 2021, and I've done some highlighting on it for you so you can follow along. it for you so you can follow along. I'd like to draw your attention to the handout, "Life on the Lagoon," which was produced in 2021 by the city. I've highlighted some things in this report that show the amount of money that has been spent for consultants, study sessions, neighborhood education, et cetera. In fact, we can go back years on the city's website and find consultant reports, study sessions, PowerPoint presentations, and neighborhood outreach. What we can't find on this San Mateo website for the lagoon is anything that's been done about the real issue, flood control. The city knows that the Marine Lagoon serves the city as a flood-control basin and needs to be dredged at least every 15 years. The city knows that the lagoon has experienced a massive shallowing over the years due to runoff and sedimentation. The city knows that the lagoon's vegetation has increased due to the shallower water, but continues to throw chemicals at the problem, hurting the environment instead of keeping the basin deeper. The city knows all the problems about the pumps, the alert system, the storm drain capacity, the backup, the culverts in the creeks throughout the city. The city knows how much funding is needed to rectify some or all of the issues to prevent flooding. What happened to the user fees collected for years from homeowners, property taxes, and general maintenance funds? Oh, but we have $1 million to paint a mural on a street in San Mateo. The problem is and has been the same for years: keep hiring consultants, have study sessions, do community outreach, and nothing else. The citizens of San Mateo have lost property, patience, and human life due to the ongoing neglect of our leaders. The city is not prepared for this upcoming winter rains. The citizens are disgusted with your kicking the can down the road. The solution for every one of you is to be voted out next election, and I will help head that effort.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sonia Nazal, followed by Ryan Moraguchi, and then Nancy Cusseri.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sonia Nazal, and I've resided in the Parkside Neighborhood for the past 14 years. I was moved by so many of the stories I heard tonight and during the June 5 meeting from my fellow neighbors and community members regarding their personal flooding experience last New Year's Eve and throughout much of January. As a mother, I'm personally terrified to think about what may befall my family if we were to experience a flood. The city has deferred maintenance of the basin for decades. However, you've been presented with a real opportunity to correct this. With the tens of millions of dollars in emergency funds available, a solution is viable. So, like the others before me tonight, I'm asking, what are you waiting for? This is a real issue that literally threatens people's lives. So the question bears repeating: what are you waiting for? Why is this not a recurring monthly agenda item? Why don't we see progress reports on actions taken week by week to ensure the safety of our citizens? Why is there no long-term plan? Meanwhile, the clock continues to tick on your watch. I'm standing before you tonight to urge not some members, but the entire council, to release emergency funds for the decades-long overdue task of dredging the flood-control basin and prioritize our public safety. We need better policy, procedures, and training to prepare San Mateo for this coming winter and future storms. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ryan Moraguchi, followed by Nancy Cusseri, and then Anna M. Kier.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash, other city council members. My name is Ryan Moraguchi. I live in North Central on Tilton, specifically on the north side of Tilton. And every year, we've got this problem. You can find me in Galoches, El Nino, La Nina, whatever atmospheric river you want to call it. That doesn't matter to me. It's just regular rain. It happens every single year. You can find me in Galoches. I'm out there cleaning the storm drains. I'm pulling trash out of there. Understandably, this is going to happen. It's just natural conditions of a neighborhood. People that also need to be responsible for their own refuse, as well as tree waste. So I'm out there in Galoches. I'm cleaning my drain. I'm calling the phone number. I've got them on speed dial after hours. It goes to the-- I call the police, and whether or not somebody shows up with the truck, you know, and they suck out and blow everything that needs to happen. The problem is, is between on Idaho, on Tilton, on the south side of the street, we've got an issue where the drains, they basically cease to work. And they fill up that corner into the apartment complex, which I don't live at, but it goes all the way up to their doors. People drive by, waves go down Idaho. Fortunately, from my side of the street, the water, which is on the north side of Tilton, the water goes to the corner and then north up Idaho. And I don't know how many of the residents behind me live on Idaho, but my water, coming from my area, is going there, where it would naturally would only come from my side of the street. But because the other side of the street is flooded, and anybody that drives down there, there are waves that just go down Idaho. So I'm just saying, put a camera down there, fix the infrastructure that the city is responsible for, and keep me from being an employee by cleaning out the drains. Thank you.
Next speaker, Nancy Cusseri, followed by Anna M. Kier, and then Todd Jans-- or Vance.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Cusseri. I live in Shoreview, and I've lived there for 24 years. And I put a lot into thinking about what I was going to say because I'm not good at this. So I reviewed the mayor's state of the city, and it's not directed specifically at you is my comments, but there were some words that stood out. And one of them was that to be a resilient future. And it's a very triggering word because it asks people to push through adversity instead of being sustainable and vital. Like, let's be stronger than-- and let's do more than being just resilient, because it's just asking you to deal with adversity. Next, there was another PowerPoint about responding and adapting. It's not enough. And I ask of you to prevent and prepare. And you have a brain trust of people here. They have lots of ideas. They might be lost in a lot of emotion, but they have brilliant ideas. Use the brain trust. Use it. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Kier, followed by Todd Jans, and then Laura Wood.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anna Kier. There's no doubt that the lagoon is the single most important issue in the city today. And we all know that it takes forever to get anything done. It took me 10 years to get stop signs, write crosswalks in front of my house, and over those 10 years, four children were hit on their bicycles in front of my house and one man, all taken away in an ambulance. And that was during the hours that I was home. Who knows was injured? Who knows who was injured when I was in home? But we can't-- the process is slow in the city. And I tell you, as a former Public Works Commissioner, I was able to do a couple things. You know, I called Larry Patterson one year. It was a year when the budget was up, and I was the only person that used to go to these budget meetings, I remember. And I said to Larry, "What do you need, Larry? What do you need to keep the city safe? What do the citizens need? How can I ask the council for money so we can get some stuff done?" He said, "The biggest issue we got is a pump station that is so old, if it breaks, there are no parts." And so I said, "Okay, you got it." He said, "North Shoreview will flood, and so will North Central." And so I got so excited and worried. I said, "I couldn't imagine that any neighborhood could be under threat." I got the commissioners, I was the other Public Works Commissioners, to come with me to the budget meeting along with Lori Watanuki and Ben Toy. We were the only people there that night, and we asked for the money to get that thing fixed. And it got on the budget, and one year later, Susan Loftus called me, and she said, "Anna, congratulations. We got money. We got $9 million to fix that pump station." Nobody knows that story, but it took somebody with some vision and some foresight of what could potentially go wrong. So I don't want to get any more phone calls from people crying. People call me crying because they have post-traumatic stress about flooding, and they're worried about flooding again. So I beg you, we have reserves. We can start this process and get it done piece by piece if we have to, but we have to start.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Todd Jans, followed by Laura Wood, and then Nikki Huth.
Well, good evening, everybody. If I'm here, there's a problem. I can tell you that much. And I'm serious. So you have some highly intelligent people that have informed you of a lot of very important-- and they're spot on, the topic. They really gave you a lot of the great information. I don't know if you're going to review it. I don't know if you're taking notes, but the information that has been given is amazing, okay? It needs to get done. So what you do is you send out for bids. You have a budget. Take in the bids, look at them, work your budget. You're going to need to do it. And if you don't have the actual, like, visual understanding of how bad this is, you need to walk the lagoon from the ends and the catch basins. So you have creeks that flow into the lagoon, okay? At those openings, they're completely impacted by silt. At least start and be proactive and get those silt dredged at the intake zones. Because what you're having is you're having huge amounts of water with nowhere to go for it not to go anywhere. My house came this far from it being flooded into the whole complete house, and I'm on a flat surface this far. And it sounds tragic to hear all these other people that have lost their properties, and you guys need to care about that. You're our constituents. You are our neighbors. We're the Flatlanders. I know we're not maybe as important as you guys. You guys are probably up in the hills. But it's going to be-- it's going to be a problem. And you can hear the heart-wrenching stories and the energy that they have. Please get into the bidding process. It's not that difficult. A lot of contractors understand this. You put out for bid, you ask for bids to come in, and then maybe you go after the funding through your emergency funding. It sounds like people are upset about this artwork also. So there might be some money that can be redirected. I know you're getting federal funding, and I'm not sure what you're required to maintain for-- I believe it's the Army Corps of Engineers. And I don't know what you're required to maintain for them and the depth, but the other speakers really nailed the points, and I hope that you recognize--
Thank you.
--that they have very good information.
Thank you very much. Laura Wood, followed by Nikki Huth, and then Rob Riddow.
My name is Laura Wood. I live in the Parkside Neighborhood, and I encourage the city to hire a professional to organize the city and its community members to help deal with climate events, not just flooding, and to work in tandem with emergency services. We need to utilize our citizens to help man 24-hour emergency lines so people can actually reach someone to talk to, assist the Public Works Department, the police and fire departments in a large-scale emergency. I don't think that we're making the best use of our resources, which are all of these people. During the storms of early 2023, we as a community were ill-equipped to deal with closing down and avoiding dangerous streets, cleaning our streets in storm drains, providing sandbags, and dispersing information, the most vital thing, to the public. I feared for the safety of my fellow neighbors when I witnessed several of them cleaning raw sewage without protective gear and one in flip-flops. Our sewers have many problems, especially along Eisenhower Street, where odors are constant in the summer months. Our streets are still pothole-ridden and really bad in the Flatlands. I have contacted the county multiple times regarding our storm drain, and nothing has been done. Our households swept the streets after each storm, but only one other direct neighbor was actively assisting. Also, I witnessed landscaping companies dumping grass in major storm drains between storms, totally blocking the drains. So there needs to be some education there. The street cleaning we presently employ does little to combat the debris that flows into our drains. I'm concerned about the disabled and the elderly population having access to medications, sandbags, electricity, and assistance.
Thank you.
Please make this a priority. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nikki Huth, followed by Rob Riddow, and then Tate.
Hi, my name is Nikki Huth, and I'm from Sunny Bray. With water backing out of storm drains, my home eventually was sitting in thigh-high lake. My downstairs was completely flooded, front to back. No help was available, and I was absolutely terrified. When the water finally receded, it was hell trying to find rental equipment and contractors. Every waking moment was spent on flood recovery for months and with very little sleep and anxiety that still exists today. FEMA warned me that more could happen, that fences could fall, large cracks could appear, leaks could appear, because the house would be settling away much more than normal. All of that has happened, every single bit. And the original repairs and the losses that I suffered, that came to originally $30,000, I'm now getting estimates of $150,000. This now dips into my retirement funds, and I feel it is due to preventable disaster that was caused by very long-term city neglect and mismanagement of maintenance. I feel angry about it. I'm very anxious over what more might occur, and I'm extremely frightened for my future because of the finances. I've only been here in San Mateo for two and a half years, not even two and a half, slightly over two years, and I only found out about all of these things when I suffered from this flood. And it's really appalling that so much has been ignored for so many years. So I hope that you will respond and do what needs to be done immediately.
I support everything that's been said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rob Riddow, followed by Tate, and then Michael Reagan.
Good evening. I've been a resident of the Parkside Community for about 20 years. I've lived and worked in San Mateo for 40 years, and currently, I'm an employee of Samaritan House. And as you know, last year, there was a flood accumulation in front of the Samaritan House. Fortunately, it ended up in somebody's fatally drowning. You've heard all the stories from all these people. You know as well as anybody here what the effects of the storms have been. You've got resources here for people with solutions, ideas. I don't know what you need to do to take action. You know what's coming. You know you risk more lives, more property damage, everything. In your position, I can't understand why you don't take action, exercise funds in the emergency funding. Do something. You're responsible for what will happen, and you know it's going to happen, and we all know it's going to happen. So the only thing I can say is that I, like everybody else here, implore you, beg you, take action. Try to prevent what you know is going to be a tragedy if we don't do something. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tate, followed by Michael Reagan, and then Thomas Morgan.
Hello, my name is Tate, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the 20 kids on my block in the village. I think it's unacceptable that we all woke up to our entire street flooded with sewer water, our homes surrounded by water, and all of our belongings in our garages covered in dirty water. When I woke up early to play soccer on January 1st, I had to wake up my dad and tell him my garage was flooded, and we were really scared. We were unable to go outside and play for several days as we all worked hard to clean up our block to get out and play together. My mom was very sick and throwing up the day after the floods and cleaning up everything. I'd like to ask the city council, what are you doing now to make sure we don't flood? I don't want us to all go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Michael Reagan, followed by Thomas Morgan, and then Danielle Querco-Gudukie.
Good evening. I really don't have to say much. You can just look behind me for these people. I've come to many, many meetings. You all know that, and this place is full. And these people sitting here are just a small portion of the probably thousands of people that are sitting in their homes right now worried about this. And I think that you should take that into consideration. You also got to remember, you know, like I say, sitting through a lot of these different items that you guys have discussed and past city council members have had to, you know, find a solution to, but this is not a normal situation. The procedures that you're trying to take, the research and consultations, is not working, and it's not going to work in this situation because-- and it's not going to work in this situation because out there coming soon is a storm and it's going to hit again. And these people are going to be in, in the same situation as they were before. And I've worked on water damage services my probably for over 40 years and I've seen the devastation that it's caused and it's very harmful. It takes years and sometimes longer to recover from such events that happen to these poor people in their homes and that type of thing. The other thing I want to make sure I, I, I was at all these meetings. I was at the meeting in January, also the last one that we had. And you had this big discussion about the $8 fee and the $22 fee. Now you've got the support here. You need to go after the money that this is going to get this done. And you guys need to convince the public that this needs to be, this needs to be a priority, not just, oh, we're just going to ask for $8 and hopefully they can, they, you know, we can, no, you need to, to emphasize the importance of this. Go for the amount of money that's needed to get this done. You have the support and I'm sure all these people are going to get out there and kick the can around and try to get this done. Please, it's a priority.
Thank you. Next speaker, Thomas Morgan, followed by Danielle Quirky Gudukie and then Jeff Lamont.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. I'm speaking tonight on, as a private citizen. I share the, I sympathize with all my neighbors and request that you act more rapidly. When I look at the problem and, and think about it, it just seems too big and it doesn't have to be big. We need to chunk it down, come up with a plan, enter into five year passes and make real progress and, and show people that we're listening and that we care and we understand the struggles and the worries that they're going through. I'm also concerned, you know, for my kids as a parent, it's getting to the point where they ask you, what are they going to do about it? And, and I'm getting to the point where I'm about to tell them that you can no longer rely on the government and you're going to need to fend for yourself. And that's a very tough conversation to have with a preteen child. And it's even more scary that they're starting to accept it. So, um, and also it's concerning that the city says it values its city staff and, you know, every year that we don't do this, fix these problems, we are also, uh, putting our staff at risk, exposing them to injury and spending more money on workers' comp and making their lives more difficult. So if we really value, if we really value our city employees, we'll also make these fixes and instead of spending money on workers' comp, we'll use it to fix these storm drains, culverts and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Danielle, followed by Jeff Lamont and then John Murphy.
Hello, my name is Danielle Swerko Guditski. I know it's a difficult one. I'm a lifelong resident of San Mateo and I grew up in Shoreview and I'm now the president of the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association. I want to start by saying thank you to everyone who came out to have their voices heard tonight. You are amazing and D4, keep going. I know that there's a lot of speculation in the city government and within the city council about how this coalition came to be, so let me be perfectly clear. This is a grassroots effort built by concerned residents both in District Four and also beyond, all united around minimizing flood risk. We've organized ourselves because we care about our safety and taking care of our neighbors. And all we want is for you to do the same. There's no mystery here, you guys. Please get to work. The last thing I'm going to say is I've been listening to all these city council meetings. I think you're all amazing, but, um, I've lived in Shoreview my whole life and I've never seen a city council member go to our neighborhood. And after the flooding, that was the least you guys could have done and nobody came. And that makes me really sad. Now, when I met Rich Hedges, Lisa Nash, they showed up, but that was two months too late. So, you know, please consider that when you talk about underserved and underrepresented, your city is east of 101 too and you guys never go there and you don't consider us. Our roads are crap. There's no stop painted on the floor on the road. The lagoon is a mess. Clearly you heard that tonight. We really need help. That's what we really need is help or begging. So please consider that. This isn't, and it doesn't need to be political. We're, we're your constituents and we want to work with you, really do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jeff Lamont, followed by John Murphy and then Monique Lago-Massino.
Good evening, City Council. So my name is Jeff Lamont and, uh, I've lived in two neighborhoods that have been affected by these floods. For many years, we owned two homes in Parkside, one on Harrison and one on the water, uh, on Roberta. Currently, we live over off of Tilden and both of those areas were really dramatically affected by the storms that we had. There was also flooding in San Mateo Village and in Sunny Bray. And it just breaks my heart to see what people have been going through, not only in that downtown area, but in Parkside where, you know, I, I put my heart and soul into that neighborhood. You know, this is an emergency as been, as has been talked about. You know, I like the term lagoon with no room. Yes, you can work on the creeks. Yes, you can work on the culverts, but if the, if the water has no place to go, we're going to have continual flooding and this is going to get worse. People are going to die. So, um, I think we really need to think about using the emergency funds that we have because this is an emergency and we know that this is going to happen again. So we need to, we need to take care of this. We can't kick the can down the road any further. We need to, we need to make sure that there's people manning those pump stations, but really when it comes right down to it, the lagoon needs to be dredged. My understanding is that that lagoon was put in about 50 years ago and when that was done, the Army Corps of Engineers recommended a dredging every 15 years. It hasn't been done, it's been spoken about tonight for 42 years. We can't keep neglecting our storm drained infrastructure, uh, infrastructure. People's properties are going to be damaged and people are going to die if this isn't taken care of. So please take this very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Murphy, followed by Monique Lago-Massino and then Kevin Simpson.
Honorable mayor and council members, uh, I've lived in Sunny Bray neighborhood for approximately 10 years. Specifically, I live across the street from Sunny Bray Park. Approximately a week ago, the stop line controlling northbound traffic on Sunny Bray at Folkstone was removed. Since then, people have been driving in front of the park, taking that corner at speed and I am concerned a pedestrian going to the park will be struck. It's, uh, they have put down small rubber barricades, but they don't seem to be doing anything to traffic and the trucks in the area just drive over them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Monique Lago-Massino, followed by Kevin Simpson and then Jake Here.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Monique Lago-Massino and I've lived in San Mateo for about 14 years and my husband has lived, um, on Lake Street for 36 years. And his parents live in, lived in Fiesta Gardens for 56 years and his mom is 91, um, was 91 during the storm and it was, it was so scary to think that if she didn't have us, what would she do? And I felt really bad for that. That lady that was retired and is having to dig in her retirement. I mean, you think about these elderly people. His parent, Bob's mom and dad have a friend that live, has lived in, um, Fiesta Gardens for a year longer than them and she's 93 and, you know, I don't know what they would have done and, and this is serious and it's scary. We live on Lake Street and watching, I mean, it was really scary watching the water just keep coming up and up and driving through the neighborhoods and, and the children, it broke my heart to hear that, that young boy talking about dirty water in his house. And, you know, this is serious and if you think this crowd's big, it's going to get bigger because, um, there's a lot of passion and a lot of people frustrated and you haven't been in the council this whole time and we absolutely understand that. But, um, let me, let me just share that we, we are here and we are allowed and we're not going away. So please take this to heart because, um, we're all very serious about it.
Thank you. Uh, the next in, in-house speakers are Kevin Simpson, followed by Jake Here. We have four hands raised on the Zoom call. And the next speakers from the Zoom call will be Mason Fong, Laura Feinstein, Jonathan Lee and Mitch Spiegel. And then we'll be done, or Spiegel.
Thank you. I actually put in my slip to talk about issue number 23, but I'll talk about this too. I live in, uh, North Central. I wasn't impacted by the flooding, but I watched in horror what unfolded and I have to say that I completely agree with this group of citizens that the ball has not moved. If this isn't an emergency, I don't know what is. Now, I happen to be very pleased about the mural on B Street and I'm going to talk about the improvements and I've been very active in that issue, but there is no greater priority in this city right now than what these folks are talking about. So I don't know how much is in the emergency fund. I haven't researched it, but if we're not using it now, I don't know when else, I don't know what else could come that we wouldn't use it for. So I strongly urge the five members of the city council to, uh, to accelerate and amplify your attention to this issue and let's get moving. And by the way, Danielle, you've done a magnificent job establishing, uh, this organization and I just want to tip my hat to you. You reached out to me early when you were thinking about getting involved and I'm so impressed. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jake Here.
Good evening, Council. I am the volunteer guardian of the four drains on the corner of my property. So I am very embarrassed to speak to you tonight about history, but I feel a need to respond when anyone supports district, um, registration for historical. I could talk for hours about history, but we'll keep this very short. I've been in direct contact with the Office of Historic Compliance or Historic Preservation. It's called OHP over the past three business days. Talked to him on the phone, emailed extensively with him. These facts are facts. I'm not exaggerating. I'm not, um, trying to scare people. This process, the process that is established in the historical nomination process is not a democratic process. Since historic nomination and registration is honorary, the OHP considers it to be acceptable to all residents. It's a 100% approval until someone objects, which is very, very difficult. It binds me and anyone else who objects to, and I quote, "the penalty of perjury under the laws of the United States of America." Try to get somebody to sign that, including me. Anyway, just say no with coin some time ago. It should be enough, but it's not. I will end my short time here with you by restating what I've already sent to the Journal. Spend your time on something that makes sense. Dredge the lagoon.
Thank you. We'll now move to the Zoom caller, um, speakers. The first speaker is Mason Fong. Please go ahead, Mason.
Thank you, City Clerk. It's great to see an engaged community and packed room at tonight's public hearing with real concerns and great intentions. As an over 20 year San Mateo resident myself with friends whose houses were flooded and who I went out in San Jose to help those flooded, uh, back a couple of years ago, um, it's, it's really a difficult issue. And so I've worked at all three levels of government. I can tell you funding is the biggest priority and I think the council is doing an amazing job leading with this ballot measure that will cover 70% of the costs ongoing to actually take care of this issue. But without the money, uh, great intentions are hard to realize goals. And so rather than focus the energy at holding the city council and city staff accountable that are already prioritizing this issue, I would urge the community to partner with the council and city staff to go to your local water district, the state government and federal government to get access to President Biden's recent infrastructure funding that is actually coming down the pipeline right now. And there's going to be a lot of infighting amongst cities within California to get access to that funding through Governor Newsom. And so what matters most now is the community going with the council in partnership to your state legislator, your member of Congress and your water district official and the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, to really advocate for San Mateo's fair share of the pie. Thank you for the consideration and your leadership, council members and city staff. And I am thankful to the community for spending tonight, uh, to hear their thoughts.
Thank you, Mason. Next speaker is Laura Feinstein.
Hello, good evening. Really appreciate having the opportunity to speak this evening. Uh, my name is Laura Feinstein. I am a resident of San Mateo in the, in the North Central District. And my heart just goes out to everybody who's spoken tonight about watching their streets and their homes flood and feeling that anxiety that it will happen again next year. I actually work in the field of California water policy. I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Policy Director at SPUR. We're a Bay Area based public policy organization. And I previously worked at Pacific Institute, which specializes in water policy. Stormwater is famous in water policy for being underfunded. For decades now, stormwater simply is the lowest priority in the water realm. Um, it never gets the funding that it needs. And what is usually so hard to gain is public support for raising the fees and taxes to fund stormwater projects. It tends to fall lower on the priority list for most people. So what's usually missing is a group like what we're seeing today. That's Blood Free San Mateo Group, which is voicing the very real need and urgency to fund stormwater more than it's ever been funded before in the city of San Mateo. So I really hope that the city council takes advantage of this moment and the public, the groundswell of public support, um, to make this happen. I want to point out that the city of San Mateo has actually quite a few opportunities at its disposal. First is that, um, the San Mateo Association of City and County Governments has developed a very thorough plan for stormwater management that the city of San Mateo could work with. And as the last speaker mentioned, there are historic investments coming this year from the state and federal government for water infrastructure. Between these things, I think the San Mateo City Council has a real opportunity to change things for stormwater this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next speaker is Jonathan Lee.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jonathan Lee and I'm a lifelong resident and business owner in both San Mateo and Foster City. And the elected dredging of the Marina Lagoon is the Achilles heel of flood control for both the city of San Mateo and Foster City. The city of San Mateo has jurisdiction of the maintenance of the Marina Lagoon. Foster City is currently raising its levy in anticipation of rising seawaters and preventing flooding. However, that will be for nil if San Mateo does not address the dredging of the Marina Lagoon because if the Marina Lagoon floods, it will affect Foster City and be an entry point of floodwaters like the Levy Breach of New Orleans during Hurricane Katrina. And this liability is something that the city of San Mateo needs to consider should the Marina Lagoon flood and affect both San Mateo and Foster City. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mitch Spiegel.
Hello, City Council. I wanted to say thank you to Danielle and the rest of the folks that showed up in person. I think a lot's been said tonight about the safety and the emotional impact of the rains and the flooding that's been happening in that area. So I want to take kind of a different tact and talk about the fiscal impact. I work in real estate. I'm working with owners and sellers and housing providers every day. And there's a major fiscal impact as well that comes with the flooding and really the insurance that housing providers and owners are now required to, to get in. And it's a tough insurance market itself right now. We're seeing folks that have a 30% increase in their insurance premiums because of the flooding and the increased flooding risk. And then also with added, you know, rent control at the state level and things like that, that there are housing providers that are worried, how am I going to keep my rents low? How am I going to keep these families in these homes when my expenses are tripling as a result of some of the flooding and other issues that are coming through because of some of the stormwater and poor water management? I just want to take a moment just to talk about that fiscal piece of it. All of these owners that show up today, renters, everybody that this impacts, it's only going to become more expensive to do these kind of issues or to make these kind of changes. And I wanted to just bring a little bit of, you know, fiscal ideas in there as well as saying that we need to get this not only on a safety and emotional perspective, but from a pure cost perspective, is that the cost of housing and the affordability crisis that we're in right now is going to be very much so compounding if we don't hit this head on. Thank you guys for the time.
Mitch was our last called out speaker. So, um, we are done with public comment on public. Mitch was our last called-out speaker, so we are done with public comment on public items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Before everyone leaves, I think, you know, we can't take, we cannot take action as a council, but I think there were a number of important questions that were raised. And so I know it's late in the hour, but if we have everyone in the room, I would like to invite you to stay a little while longer. We can direct questions to staff to answer, which I think might be beneficial for everyone who cares so much about this issue. And so I would like to invite our Public Works Director, Azalea Mitch. I can relate some of the questions I heard from community. So I think, you know, there's a really, there's a really important way to structure this conversation in terms of what is happening to prevent future flooding right now. So, and then I think that we can break up the next couple topics in terms of what is an intermediate goal and what is a long-term goal, and how do we get there? And I think, you know, I'll just frame this part of the conversation, and I've been in conversation with folks from the East Side, folks from the lagoon since day one before I even got on the council and carried that initiative to dredging the lagoon onto the council's strategic priorities list four years ago. And yes, we still have not done it. That's a fact, and that's now, you know, on my watch as well. So with the, with the understanding that we have aging and under-invested citywide infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, period, that there's no, there's no municipality that in any realistic, you know, real world will build a, you know, build capacity for a 200-year flood. The standard is to build capacity for a 100-year flood. With that said, more extreme weather events are coming. We have, we have the tools that we have right now. How can the city adapt and use our, you know, human resources, use our emergency response center, use our, you know, people power, community power differently to be more agile and respond in the immediate need to address flooding? So I think that, you know, I'm asking a lot of questions broken up, but I think that there's, there's a question about what do we do, what do we do with the infrastructure that we have now? What is the capacity to change our response protocols with the infrastructure that we have, knowing that we have a plan in place to fund these unfunded needs with, you know, hopefully with the support of community that will actually get us to 70% of the funding need? We know that we need $7 million, no, $9 million annually. If we pass this stormwater fund, we will get net new $4 million every year dedicated to stormwater infrastructure upgrades. That will still bring us, you know, two, two-plus million dollars in the red, but the story has to change. We would if we could, but we can't because we don't have the money. Moreva has been saying that, you know, and knocking her head against that story for years, and that story has to change. So how do we get the funds? So, you know, I've been doing a little bit of framing, but I think that, you know, the question is important. So given the infrastructure that we have right now, what are the preventative measures that we're taking leading up to the storm, number one? And number two, how are we changing our response protocols?
Hi. Good evening, Council members. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. I appreciate the questions. Since the New Year's Eve storm and following storms, we have been very busy ensuring that the Marina Lagoon pump station, which is our largest facility, and the lagoon watershed does drain two-thirds of the city, is as reliable as it can be. All the five pumps have been refurbished. We have troubleshooted the alarm system challenges that we did experience during New Year's Eve. We have a wet weather management plan that we've been working on for now a year and a half as it relates to being ready. The storms did allow us to learn how to really pivot and, and implement a 24/7 operation, so we were able to change the shifts and then confirm the experiences that the residents had. The photos have confirmed some of the model outputs. And so to your question, what can be done now? We do have the ability to assess the flood-prone areas. Those have been confirmed. I do want to clarify that the New Year's Eve storm was a 300-year event, and as you noted, our pipes are sized for 10 years while the pipes and the streets do convey the 100-year storm. We have also completed the upgrade of our North Shoreview pump stations and the levy improvements, and we are, we have plans in place to work with the community. We are actually very grateful for the input that the residents have provided. We are looking forward to updating the SOP, using, establishing a protocol that can help us really get feedback from the field. So we have learned a lot, but the primary focus has been for this pump station to be as reliable as it was designed for and to really focus on 24/7 operations if we do predict a very, very large event.
Thank you. Another question that I heard that I think was really important, and I know it's very clear that we have a lot of work to do to rebuild trust and the experience of the communities that were flooded. And I live in District 2. I live in North Central. North Central was, you know, inside the FEMA map. I worked years ago to, you know, to support the assessment fee to help build the levies. You know, Rich lives in District 4. So, you know, we, you know, the, I think it's important to say that there is now on the council lived experience in neighborhoods that have consistently been underrepresented and have had disinvestment and underinvestment in, from an equity standpoint and a geographic distribution of resources standpoint. So I think the other question that I heard that I think is really important is, you know, is there, is there a, an analysis that the city could do in the intermediate term before we are able to get our, our storm fee hopefully passed, right? That would get us dedicated for additional $1 million a year? Is there an immediate-term investment that could be made, like for example, spot dredging, right? That we could look at, look at actually getting something really concrete and impactful done and what that budget or, you know, allocation could look like? Because I, you know, reading, you know, reading the room and reading the community, it's hard to imagine, you know, there's been so much distrust, you know, and trust broken in lack of confidence, you know, and we are not, we don't have control over the weather. But the things that we do have control over are the resources, right? And how we dedicate those resources. And so, you know, we don't have an emergency fund. That fund doesn't exist. I've worked, you know, been on council for now four years. There's no such thing as an emergency fund. What there is is a rainy day fund. We have a reserve. And maybe there's an opportunity for us to look at, you know, or has the city at this point looked at what a, you know, a significant and sort of intermediate investment with high impact could look like that would necessitate likely dipping into the reserve fund, because it is, has, is not yet a budgeted item, right? We, 43 years have passed, and there's never been a budgeted item. There's never been dedicated funding for this infrastructure, and that's exactly what this council has opted to change when we passed the, you know, when we voted to approve the consent item for the pursuit of the Prop 218 storm fee.
Absolutely. I think what we can definitely focus on is making sure that the silt, the sediment that is currently blocking our gates, our culverts, that that sediment is dredged out. That would be able to maintain the conveyance clear. We have been working with One Shoreline to see if we can, they can assist us on the permitting side, because we need permits to remove sediment, and a lot of those culverts are owned by Caltrans. So we are working with One Shoreline on assessing the feasibility of getting a consultant to help us address. So that would be, I think, ensuring that the conveyance system is clear, a win and something that we could do in the interim.
Thank you. Is there a timeline to bring that to council?
In terms of where One Shoreline might be hiring consultants, we can report back. Or in terms of the strategy, one of the things that we did request funding from you all is to update our storm drain master plan, and that will really help us prioritize and present a strategy for what can be done now within five years, within 10, 20 years.
Okay. I mean, I think, I appreciate that, and we want to be measured and well-planned. I think that there's concern, rightly so, from the community that have seen numerous master plans and numerous, numerous analyses that have not come to fruition for lack of funding. And so, you know, it, I think the, you know, the question still remains, you know, in the intermediate term, meaning, you know, in the next year to two years, you know, what would a, you know, an injection of an investment look like that could have high impact, that might actually be done in advance of, because we, I feel confident that we know the issues. I do. I feel like we know what needs to get done. And so I would be interested in learning more about, you know, what a potential strategy like that could look like. The other question that I heard on the floor, which I think is in suggestion I heard, was, you know, what is the city doing to tap into federal funding? We know that the Bidens' infrastructure package is coming, and this could be, you know, we don't want to wish and want for windfalls. We want to go after, you know, dollars that, and bring them home. So what are we doing to ensure that we're tapping into all of the possible, you know, resources available?
One of the benefits of having some dedicated funding is that it does open the door to a lot more grants. We were able, through the Clean Water Program, for example, and the funding that we did receive on the sewer side, having dedicated funding and seeking grants to supplement to really address that gap is a huge benefit. So I think with this fee, we would be, if indeed it does, the mail ballots do, if we get the support that's needed, then that would be dedicated funding that would put the city in a much better, better position for loans and grants.
Thank you. And then I guess for, you know, for the purposes of having a counterpoint, right? And I think we know, I think we know what the counterpoint is of the do-nothing strategy. If we don't pass this fee, if this fee is unsuccessful, so, you know, just by way of some history, Councilmember Hedges raised, you know, raised the point that council, previous councils tried to go after a fee earlier, and it polled very poorly. And so the, you know, there was not, there was not community support for a funding strategy. We're actually going after a fee at, you know, $8 a month for, you know, your standard or your typical single-family home, and the polling is still, you know, it's, it could be better. It's within the margin of error. If, you know, if we do nothing, right? If we continue with status quo, what does status quo look like?
The status quo is that if we get a significant event larger than the 100-year storm, and even storms smaller, we do have localized flooding because we have system deficiencies. So those areas that are prone to flooding will continue to flood.
So, you know, my, my impression is that this council, you know, is taking a leap of faith in supporting the $8 assessment fee with lukewarm polling. And the hope is, is that we can work in partnership with community to actually get this passed, and that there's already efforts underway from the city to educate on this issue. There's been a mailer sent, an educational mailer. There is going to be another educational mailer. There's going to possibly be a third mention and section in a future mailer. So the city is trying very hard within the, you know, within the allowable rules and guidelines of, that city can operate in to educate community and bring community along. But this is something that will not happen without broad community support. So if we don't get an assessment fee passed, then, then we don't have dedicated, we continue to not have dedicated funding, and the infrastructure's improvements won't happen at the pace that they need. And we know that we needed them yesterday. We needed them decades ago. So Councilmember Hedges, did you have any follow-up questions?
I've actually got some things that I heard tonight that I think are fairly simple to do, and I want to make sure that we're planning for that. One of the things that's been said to me, and I've visited a lot of homes, one of the things that's been said to me, why can't we have sandbag stations close to the neighborhoods that have been flooded? And I think it's imperative, if winter comes, that we're setting up in parks near San Mateo Village, near Sunny Bray, near Parkside, near Shoreview, and also near Laguna Vista.
North Central.
And North Central, to have these sandbag stations. The other thing I heard tonight was cleaning the creeks. One of the big problems we have with the pumps is that they get gummed up with all of the debris that comes down with the first heavy rain. If we get the creeks cleaned, that will prevent some of that. I hope we have plans to do that and the personnel to do it. And it's, now, and just an aside, I worked for over 10 years to get us out of FEMA, by myself in the first five or six years. And I'm telling you now that even when we got to the point where we could do it, we had to get through seven permits surrounding water quality. And we had one agency, the Federal Fish and Wildlife, that controlled three permits that held it up for two years to get a, to get funding for their pet project. And so we ended up giving them $60,000 hard-earned dollars. So we need to get started on this as soon as possible, as you well know, but we need to do those short-term things that can be helpful and don't cost a lot of money. So do we have plans to do the things I brought up with you?
Absolutely. We have many trash racks on both public and private creeks, and that is part of our ongoing maintenance. We clear them ahead of time, and during rain events, we actually have staff that are, that have the responsibility to clear them. So that is ongoing part of the maintenance that we do to make sure that the debris is removed from, from the trash racks throughout the creeks.
How about the creeks going backwards?
The creeks, so we do have a challenge in terms of public and private creeks and responsibility, but we are doing what we can to make sure that the racks, they serve a function. Whatever debris comes down is held back by the racks, and the focus is to make sure that those racks stay clear.
So I had a conversation with Congressman Mullen about what we're talking about, about financing some of this, and he told me that the appropriations have already been made for this year, but we need to be focusing on Mullen's office to try to bring some money here, both from inside the city and from local residents. There were enough people here tonight that if they're, if they're pushing the office by sending emails and telephone calls about funding, then I think Kevin would be very responsible in trying to get us some money that we need. And he actually told us that he would work on it. That's all I have.
This sounds like we're asking clarifying questions related to the public comment as opposed to making comments.
That's right.
I would like to ask, when will the council see an item on, you know, that analyzes the findings from the investigation that has been spoken about before and perhaps provides an opportunity to talk about next steps?
Absolutely. We've held a few public meetings. We're holding another one tomorrow, and we are scheduled to return to you on August 21st to summarize the findings of the reconstruction of the New Year's Eve event, the confirmation of the flooding that the model output is showing. We are, we have been receiving photographs from residents that confirm the findings and to present to you the next steps as it relates to the budget that you did approve as of July 1st, additional funding to do the assessments, taking into account the comments and feedback as it relates to what can be done in the short term and interim.
Thank you. And during that item, it sounds like we'll be able to maybe talk a little bit about, maybe we can spend a little more time explaining, maybe perhaps in detail, the different steps that the city is taking to prepare for this coming winter and and if there do appear to be opportunities to do more this year, if we had some funding to put toward it, you know, is that a conversation that could begin at least in August?
Absolutely. I think what we, based on, I would really, really want to thank the residents during our last community meeting because the questions were, were very helpful. And I think we can present to you on the 21st, a follow-up as it relates to what do we need to do to be prepared for this year. That's been in the planning phase. I think we got very specific questions that we can, we can present to you in terms of strategy and begin that bigger conversation as it relates to resources now and resources needed for something more robust in the interim.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
So start sandbagging, right? We should go home and start sandbagging around my house right now. He doesn't sound like getting his money. You guys should, if you're going to ask for more copper dollars, you should say 90% of the production.
Thank you. We are in the middle of deliberation. Thank you.
I'm going to start sandbagging around my house. I know nothing's happening. I'm going to start sandbagging around my house. Remember what I said, two inches away from going into the house. This time he's going to go in. I'm going to be pissed.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Zellie, I was wondering, and I don't mean to talk out of turn, but it seems to me that if ever there was a time to use a rainy day fund, it would be to prepare for the upcoming rainy days. So would it be possible to have a couple of options presented to us on August 21st of if, you know, like if and then, like if the city were to use the rainy day fund for X millions of dollars, we could do these additional things? And could we get two or three tiers like that that we could evaluate so that we can do something? I, I think there's a huge groundswell of support here, and I don't think we should miss this window of, of using people. I think using people's, you know, action, and I think, you know, we could be doing things. I, I was talking to my former Boy Scout troop the other day, and, you know, there's, there's Boy Scout, there's four, well, they're not just Boy Scouts, there's scout troops in, in the Bay Area, in San Mateo now, that they will do Eagle projects and service projects and go out and help us clean the culverts. And I think we can get tons of people right here that were here tonight that will go out and help us clean the culverts. So I'd like to see, you know, things that we can do that cost us close to nothing and, and have some plans there. And I'd also like to see if you could present to us a few tiers of, if we have to dip into the rainy day fund, you know, what would that cost and what can we get from it to help us be better prepared for this coming winter?
Absolutely. I think we, we've been very appreciative of the Adopt a Drain program. One of the things that we can definitely present to you is really modernizing our, what, we have no cameras on our systems. I think the residents spoke to that. We don't have a way to monitor and visually see, virtually see our conditions 24/7, and that's something that other agencies do have, other cities do, where residents can see on the website what the levels in the creeks are. That is something that we can definitely would like to propose so that, because it will take, changing, upsizing a covert cannot be done overnight. But what we can do is, is become more efficient in terms of our operations and be more responsive if we have the, the tools such as the cameras and the level sensors.
Please. Public comment period has closed. Thank you.
I have an idea. We'll talk later.
We'll, we'll talk.
And that's what I wanted to say, essentially. This is an example, because I know Director Mitch, you and I have spoken about all the things you want to do, but you don't have the resources for. You're not complaining, it's just reality. So I think we now have an opportunity for you to be specific, but also to see what kind of partnerships can happen, because, Mr. Grants, you gave a lot of examples of how you're already partnering, and I think we can do a lot more. And the city also has an incredible volunteer capability that is already organized. So how can we put that to bear to help people, the east side of 101, the west side, the north, the south? As you said, this is a citywide issue. So I look forward to the 21st of August, but I also look forward to, maybe there's some way of collecting all these great ideas beside our wonderful city clerk typing them down. Maybe there's a website people can go to and start saying, here are things that can happen, because all of you are living it. You know, we're listening, and you're doing everything you can, but if we can collect all of that, and then you can incorporate that into your plan, then that's already community support. And, and I encourage everybody to go to the meeting tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30 at the main branch of the library, where Director Mitch and her team are going to present the findings again, and there will be opportunity to talk to other members of the community. So.
Thank you so much. I think that concludes this non-agendized public comment period. And, and we will, we will, we will continue, we, we need to reflect with each other, do we want to take a break, a 10-minute break? Yes? Okay. Why don't we take a 10-minute break, and we'll see you back here at 9:30?
Welcome back, everyone. I hope we had a restful break of 15 minutes. So indulgent. So we are moving on to public hearing item number 23, Outdoor Dining Standards and Permits Amendments. It looks like we have a presentation teed up from our Economic Development Manager, Jennifer Chen. Is your mic on, Jennifer?
Thank you. Good evening, City Council Mayor. I am Jennifer Chen, the Economic Development Manager. And with me is Denise Garcia. Denise will make a presentation about the parklet amendments and fees, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jennifer. Again, my name is Denise Garcia, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Okay, so first I would like to share a background of where we're at and what is currently allowed. So in June 2021, the City Council adopted a permanent parklet permit program. And as we can see on this slide, we have a picture as an example of what that looks like, and that's actually 3B's Coffee in downtown Samadale. And in March 2022, City Council revised its existing sidewalk dining encroachment permit to include pedestrian mall dining. And we can see a photo of the transition with the existing sidewalk dining encroachment permit to allow for outdoor dining furnishings in the pedestrian mall. Both programs went into effect when the city's temporary outdoor dining permit program expired on April 30th of 2022. Most recently, in May of this year, City Council directed staff to revisit the guidelines to allow parklit platforms within the pedestrian mall. Before sharing the amendments that took place, here are two existing permit options for outdoor dining. It is important to note that there are two distinct encroachment permits with different application processes because they vary in requirements. So one application is more complicated because it requires more information, which is the parklit one, whereas the other is less complicated because it requires less information, which is a sidewalk and pedestrian mall furnishings. So I will share what each, what both of these are. So the parklet allows ground floor food service businesses to construct a dining platform within on-street parking spaces directly in front of their business. Parklets are allowed citywide in commercial districts. Sidewalk and pedestrian mall furnishings allow ground floor food service businesses to provide outdoor seating and related furniture along sidewalk, in commercial districts, and on the street within the pedestrian mall. And also another small point to make is that a separate sidewalk and pedestrian mall furnishings encroachment permit is not required for parklet permits, whether that be citywide parklet or a parklet within the pedestrian mall. In order to effectively follow council's direction to allow parklit platforms on the pedestrian mall, staff created a new set of standards for the pedestrian mall platform, parklit platform permit. So this will allow ground floor food service businesses located within the pedestrian mall, which is B Street between First and Third Avenue, to construct a dining platform in the closed street directly in front of their business. And since the details of the requirements are so different under each program, staff thought it would be less confusing for businesses to have three different sets of standards instead of just one, one set of standards with all of them included. This will hopefully ease businesses as they navigate which requirements apply to them based on their location. Here we have the different amendments that took place for the standards. So first, we have separated them into three sets of standards, which I just shared, and added a description to each of the three outdoor dining options. We also replaced the term "guidelines" with "standards" to clarify that the standards are requirements and must be followed as opposed to suggested approaches. We also clarified criteria regarding utilities, storm drains, sidewalk, under drains, and street paving. And lastly, staff clarified those separate sidewalk and pedestrian mall furnishings encroachment permit is not required for parklet permits. Here we have our permit fees with the proposed pedestrian mall fee associated with it. So first, we, I'd like to share what we currently have, which is the parklet encroachment permit has a one-time application fee of $530 and an annual permit fee of $265 per parking space used in the parklet. And just a reminder, we do only allow a maximum of four parking spaces. The sidewalk and pedestrian mall furnishings permit does not have a one-time application fee since the application review is very minor, but there is an annual fee of $408.21. And for our proposed pedestrian mall parklet permit fee, we are asking that the fee be $530, which is the same as the citywide parklet program, and an annual fee of $408.21, which is the same as the outdoor dining furnishings fee for any businesses within the pedestrian mall interested in constructing a parklit platform.
Denise, before, can I just interrupt with one quick clarifying question? So are, are the businesses required to pay the one-time application fee and say they get approved, then do they also have to pay the annual fee for that first year, or is the first year annual fee waived? It is not waived. They would have to pay for both. Okay, thank you.
So this concludes my presentation, but I do want to share the staff recommendation. It is to adopt a resolution to, one, approve amendments to the standards for the various outdoor dining permit programs to allow for parklets to be constructed in the downtown pedestrian mall; two, amend the fee schedule to create a new fee for parklets in the pedestrian malls; and three, authorize the city manager to make further minor administrative amendments to these program standards. Thank you for the opportunity, and Jennifer is here to answer any follow-up questions.
Thank you. Who would like to begin with questions, council questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Denise, and thank you, Jennifer. This is great progress forward. And a couple of things, with the standards, when you were looking at them for the pedestrian mall, how many of those standards are specifically safety-related? Like the, you know, the red stripes on the, how far that has to be away from the red stripe and what has to happen in terms of ADA access? And which one of them, which one of those standards are policy-related? And for example, it was shared with me that the prior council had made the decision that, you know, if you were on a corner, that, and Mayor Lee would know this, that the decision was made, you couldn't have parklets on both sides. That's what I mean by a policy decision as opposed to the red stripe has to be so long so that a emergency vehicle can be there. And I'm just asking that to understand, is there opportunity to do even more, to be more focused in what we can do to help the restaurants on the ped mall?
So first, let me start with, when we created these standards and guidelines back in 2021, we were trying to optimize and balance the, the cost of building parklets with safety and city investments in our existing infrastructure. So we don't allow for bolting of items into our right-of-way because if they're removed, they can create a lot of damage to our asphalt, as well as potential damage to the underground utilities. Having said that, so we think this is currently a really good balance of keeping it cost-effective for the businesses, so it is less, they don't have to build a foundation, they just have to build a flattened platform on risers. And if their business changes, it's easy for that business to turn back into a consumer-facing retailer versus a restaurant, versus other communities who've decided to go with a heavier cement base. On your question about the standards, again, we do, safety, this is a high criteria for this set of guidelines, standards, I should say. And while there are things related to, we do look at certain conditions on case-by-case basis. So if a business on a corner would like a, to, to look at maybe having both sides or look at more than one, that is something that council can take a look at as a policy change, but do know that what happens, especially on the ped mall, the cross streets are being utilized as loading and parking zone, also for the same area. So if they're taken over by parklets, now the delivery people have to go even further out in order to do a 20-minute drop-off or to bring in the groceries for these businesses. And we do have residents on the second stories of B Street between, especially between First and Second, and the only way in accessing point is either if they can unload before 10:00 AM or basically to cart it in from the side streets.
And have you gone out and talked to any, any of the businesses about these proposed changes?
We, so the proposed changes are, have removed, I'm sorry, there's one more point, have removed all of the parking-related, like wheel stops that would, that would be in place if they were on the street. And these guidelines that we have created for the, for the pedestrian mall, most of those has, we had done the outreach earlier to businesses about what we would see, what we would need for the parklets.
Okay, so you're, you're using prior input?
Yes.
Are you going to be talking to us about the parklets, the design?
So am I going to, I'm sorry?
Will you be talking to us tonight about the designs for the parklets that?
So we have identified three existing as-built plans that we will include as examples for businesses who are interested in applying in building their own parklet. One of them is, two of them are from built parklets that are in the street that they can utilize, and it shows the amount of information that staff needs to review it. And one of them is from a prefab parklet manufacturer that businesses can utilize. Even with that, though, our streets are not uniform, so they will have to make some changes per their plan. But we cannot make adjustments like not allowing for access to the fire hydrants. We have to give fire plenty of space to get through because every second counts and their apparatus is really heavy. So there are a lot of things that we basically try to eliminate as much as possible while still keeping safety priority.
Right. But I, I just bring it up because I think one of the things I heard from a lot of the businesses was we're interested in doing the parklets, but they're expensive. And the fact that you've gone out and identified things, I think that's something that you should consider really promoting.
Yeah, ours are a lot less expensive because we're not requiring for the cement base.
Yep. And anyhow, I've got some comments later, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Questions from other council members?
Thank you, through the mayor. Jennifer, maybe riffing off of the deputy mayor's question, just to clarify, we received some public comment with a number of suggestions and questions related to the current existing standards. And I think you touched on, with regard to the fire hydrants, for example, this, the idea that the current spacing of parklets away from fire hydrants, and I would, I would add away from
FDCs?
I think crosswalks.
Right. FDCs, yeah, that one. FDCs, so.
What's an FDC?
It's the Safari Department Control for them to, I thought that's what you were talking about.
Got it. I see, I see. No, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, so our, is, could you maybe explain a little about how those distances were derived?
Public Works set those distances. They were basically a standard that we could go to, and if a business did want to change that, we could, Public Works has said that they can review it on a case-by-case basis to make some slight adjustments. I will say that one of the built parklets, which is Paza, which everyone has seen, it's gorgeous, there's a red zone right in front of their parklet, and they did have a car drive into that parklet and move it by a couple inches. So those red zones are really important for sight vision and accidents, to prevent accidents from happening.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add on through the mayor, so I would just add, touching a little bit on what Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash asked and, and what you asked. In the beginning of the parklet process, we did have our multidisciplinary team meet and discuss the policy and the safety questions very extensively, and that included fire staff, building staff. And I would say that the majority of the guidelines or standards that we ended up with are safety-related. And so the 15-foot distance from the hydrants is for fire apparatus size. The 25-foot distance from the crosswalks is commensurate with the site distance needed for vehicles turning and their ability to see pedestrians and bicyclists when they're turning corners. And so when we think about the parklets, the height of the parklet partition walls are in line with the heights of fences and hedges and other obstructions such as monument signs. And so that was very intentional, that we made that setback from crosswalks, the same as for other things that are of a similar height to the parklets, so that vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists could see each other. And so they are very much safety-related standards, just like the distances from the red curbs and the fire hydrants and things like that. Same with the trellis structures, which was also a question that you got asked. That was for, for gusty winds so that they don't get taken away by the wind.
Thank you. We also received another public comment through email indicating that some interest in, in sharing opinions from the retail brokerage community in the area related to the ped mall. And I, I guess I wanted to ask about whether, you know, when, when the city may have in mind an opportunity to review how the ped mall is going, if there's something, is this, is there an opportunity within the next, you know, is there, is there a natural opportunity to review how the pedestrian mall is going at which we could potentially take more inputs from our businesses or, you know, the public or other stakeholders at this time?
Currently, the ped mall improvements have not actually happened, so we would need to actually have the improvements be built and tested out and see at that time if council wishes to then, or the council at that time wishes to make other opinions. But I did reach out, I saw the comment, I came in at 7:00 PM this evening, and I did reach out to the brokerage community, and I will be meeting with them to kind of hear how we can collaboratively make the ped mall work for them. Currently, I think their concern is trying to link the Trags project with their with their future build-out at Fourth and Fifth on B. And I think what I said to them is that we could collaboratively find something that will work for everybody.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, council member Hedges?
Just to start, so it's clear, I think, I think I know the answer to it. The charges for the parklets are primarily to replace the parking fees that we're losing?
No, that's not really, the amount of staff time and the amount that we're charging is really not compensating the loss in parking fees. In 2001, the city did bring, the council at the time, looked at our program and compared it to other cities with similar program in 2001. And staff proposed a per-parklet fee for the parking stalls at $1,000 per space. Council at that point reduced it to $250 annually for renewal. Our proposed fee, along with the review fee, is much lower than surrounding cities I have looked at. I've not done extensive research, but our 500 review fee and our parking fee is much lower than our surrounding cities.
I wasn't as much concerned about the amount as just why we were doing it, to make sure people understood.
The review of it is, it takes staff time a lot, so I have time to look at it.
One of the things that people brought up to me, I've, based on what we voted on as far as keeping First to Second Street open or closing, keeping it closed, I interviewed, I think, every business owner along there. And one of the concerns they had about parklets were if we have fiestas, or we're going to have to remove them.
We have removed that part area, that they must remove them, but the parklets will still be removable because there will be street work that need to be done. There may be things that we need to clean. So the parklets are going to be built in a way that can be removed.
So without, without destroying them?
Yeah, without destroying them.
And easily reassembled again?
Yeah, and we are working on ways to have events around the parklets. But there may be events that, if we have a street fair and the street organizers are organizing it and wants on B Street, it may be the park, some of the people with, with its tables and furnishings may have to retract them because they'll be easier to move around.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. As far as when, we've already appropriated the money, I believe, for the, for the upgrades for the two blocks. And so when the bollards are placed and they can be retracted, doesn't that make it easier for deliveries?
For the what? I'm sorry?
For deliveries.
So it will be easier to keep the pedestrians safe because it will be automatically pulled up afterwards. For the deliveries, we're retrofitting an existing street, so I'm not sure if it would be necess, I mean, it will be less, they don't have to get out of their car to move these water barricades. So logistically, it will be simpler.
So then the vehicle making deliveries can pull in when the bollard is lowered, to make the deliveries?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's what I thought. I just wanted to verify. So would that change then our direction on the, I guess it wouldn't, on the, on the, the parklets close to the curb? We'd still have to have them pushed back in order for vehicles to get in?
To have the, yeah, they can't go straight up to the sidewalk.
Okay, that's all I have for right now.
I have a quick clarifying question. Right now, the delivery window is supposed to be before 10:00 a.m. When we have the retractable bollards, will, will there, will that timeframe still be enforced?
We can, it will be enforced. What happens is that the pedestrian mall gets really busy. So you don't want large trucks to go in where people are recreating and eating or just hanging out and playing games. So we're just trying to keep the deliveries and organize it so that the trucks can be in and out before there's a high level of activity.
So, so the bollards, so the time, the timeframe still remains? The benefit of the bollards is that is the ease of entering without having to move large water barricades? Okay, thank you for clarifying. Any other questions? I, I had a couple. I was wondering, what, what is the plan and timeline for implementation of the permit process to be moved online? Is that, you know, I assume that's part of what our, our plan is, I hope?
I think that's more of an overarching question because these are encroachment permits, which are Public Works permits. This just happens to be a type of encroachment permit that gets issued. So that's really, it's one of many kinds of encroachment permits that we issue. And so that's a question that I'm discussing with our incoming city manager because there is a desire to further our automation and the services that we offer to our customers. And I don't think it should be a super, super-heavy lift, provided that, you know, we have the staffing and time to do it. And so I think that's pretty high on our list. And we have a model to go from because we do offer other kinds of permits online. And so I can't give you an exact timeframe, but I would say near term. Like first, first half of the fiscal year, I, I think, would be a fair estimate.
Businesses are allowed to submit electronically to us. They just have to, you know, and we have been really hands-on, especially within the pedestrian mall.
Thank you. And I, I realize that there's been a lot of hands-on effort. And this is, we really created something out of nothing. This never existed before a couple of years ago. And it's evolved from, you know, pandemic shacks dressed up. Very nice places to go when we had no place to go, to, you know, some really beautiful build-outs. I guess I'm curious about kind of the, the data tracking question and having some more visibility to, you know, from the council's perspective as policymakers to understand how this is going. What is the rate of success? Or how many, you know, how many applicants are we getting? How many inquiries are getting? How many of those inquiries and applications are then ultimately successful? How many of those are then actually getting built out? How, you know, what's the, what's the long range? You know, are people building them and then deciding they no longer want them? And, you know, is there, is there sort of a life cycle that we should be aware of with business turnover or deciding to discontinue them? I, I have a lot of questions as, you know, as we think about this becoming, this is now a permanent program. How, how we can make that data analysis more tangible and visible for us as policymakers to understand, you know, where there are tweaks on the margins and to continue to elevate this process, streamline it through online permitting, but also, you know, look at what are the barriers of entry? And some of those things are out of our control. You know, the, frankly, the, the design hurdle and cost of architectural design services is really significant as, as our, you know, construction costs. So, but what can we do that's within our purview to better understand how this is working, where it's working, hot mapping, where we have parklets? I think also, you know, just from the perspective of, you know, working in partnership with the SMA and our, our Chamber of Commerce, linking that data to them and highlighting the fact that, you know, we have these great assets, right? In the city, outdoor dining is, you know, is a draw to the city. That, that we could be working in closer partnership with our, you know, with our business and commerce associations to help highlight if we were to provide that data. So I, so I suppose that's, if I were to frame this in as a question, because this is the question part. The question is, you know, are, do we have or can we assemble a plan for data capture and reporting out as we continue to look at bringing this forward and looking at the success of the pedestrian mall? Or, and status of, you know, and progress of, of the pedestrian mall and the parklet program as a whole?
So you're asking a question of, if everyone was allowed to build a parklet, how many percent of it would actually get built, kind of like that type of assessment? Because the reason why...
Let me clarify. So for example, one, you know, the data points that I would be interested in is how many inquiries do we get? How many of those inquiries turn into applications, right? How many of those applications are approved or rejected? How many of those approved applications actually get built? How many of those approved applications that get built are, you know, what is, you know, what are they spending? I'm curious, like what are, what are they actually investing? What's sort of the price range that we're, you know, that, like a survey of built-out parklets? What are they, what did it take to build that? And then, and then long range, are, are businesses that continue to stay open and in business, are they continuing to opt into the parklet program on an annual basis? You know, what's, what is the long-term investment and commitment? Or are they, are they being built and then disbanded? Or, or are they disappearing when businesses close, which we can assume is inevitable? And so kind of disaggregating what, you know, those two potential options could be.
I think I want to say that businesses that have applied, they've not been rejected. We've had plans that have been insufficient. So sometimes they just decide to not continue because they feel like, they feel like the hurdle is, it's a large barrier. I'm hoping with these standardized plans, it will feel like, oh, I can just build plans similar to this and they'll get back on track. But oftentimes, what I've heard is that they decided to not continue on that option because they feel like the amount of square footage they're getting for the outdoor dining is not sufficient for what they're getting back and what they can make on that space. That's what I've heard as the reason why they have not proceeded. We've not, on encroachment permits, we don't say no. We just tell them basically how we get you to yes. And sometimes the businesses have not been happy with what the standards are.
For yes.
So I think the answer to your question is yes. We definitely can figure out a way to evaluate our parklets program. We can incorporate some of the metrics you mentioned and figure out if there are any others that would be worthwhile. And I think Jennifer probably just pointed out to a really good one, which is if they don't continue to opt in or if they make inquiries and they decide not to move forward, is that we might want to find out why and figure out how we could use that information to improve our program. And so I think those are valuable questions to ask as well.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have exhausted all of the questions. It's time to open it up for a public comment.
Yes, we have one. In the council chamber speakers, Kevin Simpson will be first, and I have one hand raised online.
Thank you. So I have, what, 20, 25 minutes? Because I could talk on this for a lot longer than that. So I'm really excited to see this. Thank you for the great work on this. This is another great step forward in making B Street really kind of the front porch of San Mateo. I belong to a kind of very ad hoc group that's formed in the last few months since we started talking about this, called B Street Boosters is what we're calling ourselves. And our goal is to make sure that this is a reality, that it's a huge asset for San Mateo. And then it gives us something downtown that's completely unique and really fulfills the promise of the climate we have, the community we have, and the built environment that we have. So I would say that, number one, I want to urge you to approve this. Number two, I would love to see us maybe tinker with one thing. Let's remove the fees for a year. Let's encourage, for the downtown parklets, let's encourage those businesses to invest. It's going to cost them money to build these things. Let's lean forward and remove the barriers as much as we can for a year or two years. One of the things we're trying to do is, is address that cost aspect by finding players in our community who might be able to help the businesses build these parklets. So I've started reaching out to some of the developers who are doing big projects in town. We could use your help with that. We'd love to get the labor unions involved in actually building some of these things. We'd like to see something like a community barn raising where we go out and build parklets for any business on the pedestrian mall that wants to have it. Beautiful, standard, attractive, but also customizable parklets would be a, a great way to, to boost this. We're doing a lot of other things, too. We're trying to get programming downtown so that more people are enjoying and coming down for all kinds of different things. I set up my telescope and showed the beautiful moon to 200 people. And maybe in the next week or so, I'll set up out there so that people can see a nearby galaxy or a nebula or two and something exciting like that. And in the fall, we'll go look at the planets. So come on down. But we're looking at bringing musicians. We're looking at bringing kind of little fun sporting events, all kinds of other things to get people involved and get them down there and let them see the businesses that they have to choose from and let them patronize those. So I would love to see you pass this. I would love us to come together and really encourage more and more businesses to build these parklets on the pedestrian mall. We can't wait for the permanent improvements to get built. By the way, one of the chief assets of the bollards and the other things in the plan are there not those ugly barriers? And we're going to try and figure out a way to cover those things until the bollards and the other stuff comes in. So thank you very much for all the hard work on this. Thanks for approving it tonight. And maybe we can find one more little step where we can save a few hundred dollars for these businesses. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. If you intend to speak to this item, item number 23 on the Ped Mall, if you could please raise your hand now. Okay, we have three speakers on Zoom. The first speaker will be Jonathan Stone, followed by Jordan Grimes, and then Mason Fong. Please go ahead, Jonathan.
Good evening, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. I'm Jonathan Stone with Prometheus Real Estate Group. We're a San Mateo-based real estate development, investment, and management company. We want to take this opportunity to thank council and city staff for their leadership and hard work in bringing forth these much-needed standards to further enable the downtown businesses to thrive. We look forward to working with our tenants in the area who wish to implement these design standards for the benefit of their businesses. Along with tonight's vote to approve these design standards, we would also like to continue the discussion to seek ways to make downtown as successful as possible. To express the details of some of the ongoing difficulties we're having with retail leasing of the Brickline project, a former Trags site, as a result of the street closures. Lockhouse, the retail broker for Brickline and one of the main retail brokerage firms in the area, has submitted a letter, as previously referenced, regarding their position on the downtown San Mateo market affected by the pedestrian mall project and the street closures. We'd like to help facilitate communication with the brokerage community in order to empower city council and city staff with information and feedback on both the successes and challenges resulting for both the implementation of the outdoor dining standards adopted tonight as well as the overall street closures. We're happy to provide this feedback in whatever forum council and city staff may deem most appropriate, whether it be a future public hearing or any other opportunity, as you all see fit. We do continue to envision a connected and thriving downtown San Mateo community and are heavily invested in the success of downtown. And Kevin, we certainly want to continue the dialogue with you and your group as well. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Grimes. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. Really, really excited to see this moving forward. There's so much potential for B Street, and it's incredibly important to get this right. And, and I think we largely have now, finally. I want to urge the approval. I also want to second Kevin's comment. I, I totally agree with everything he said. I have repeatedly heard that the upfront fees are a big barrier. I'd love to see us waive those fees for the first year to spur investment in, in infrastructure to get people to really see the value here and the incredible public gathering space that this can become with the right incentives. I also do want to specifically ask about worst hall. This was a favorite of mine during the pandemic. And I know that prior to about a year ago, they were allowed to use both space on B and on Baldwin. I do want to find out if the new proposal will allow them to resume that. It was a huge draw for myself, for many others from San Francisco, from San Jose, from, from Pla... for many others from San Francisco, from San Jose, from places, people would travel to, to come to worst hall for this experience. You regularly had hundreds of diners on, on both streets at, at the cost of 13-ish parking spaces. I really hope that we're able to find a way to bring that back and just wanted to find out if this new ordinance will allow that. So thank you for your time tonight. Very excited to see where this is headed.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mason Fong.
Thank you, City Clerk. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. First, I just want to thank council and staff for the support in creating these design standards, and I would urge you to adopt them tonight. Secondly, given the comment tonight on concerns related to the retail leasing and challenging business impacts related to the downtown street closures and calls from even council for success metric updates on the implementation of outdoor dining standards, the ballards and the pedestrian mall project as a whole, I just wanted to offer some food for thought. You know, you could actually collect and analyze this feedback from some kind of public format that is accessible to downtown businesses, landlords in the community alike, such as a future public hearing, community forum, like a Chamber of Commerce or Downtown Association meeting, or just a web portal that consolidates a report for council to digest that has that feedback, you know, through a website. It's really common for councils to receive check-ins and status updates on past public policies where concerns on unintended consequences may arise. Of course, mining efficient use of staff time to consolidate these status updates towards an already scheduled hearing when possible. For reference, the outdoor dining issue was City Council Priority Number 47 on last year's FY '22 to '23 City Council Priority List, where a status update on it was included in the council report on October 2nd, 2022, last year. Perhaps the upcoming FY '23, '24 City Council Priorities Mid-Cycle Update later this year that's already scheduled could include an update such as this. I imagine that would take place in October again this year, who knows? But even if the council does not have this item on its City Council Priority List, it's always something that a question could be raised, right? So just thank you once again to council and staff, some food for thought. And I'm looking forward to supporting local businesses with my friends and family after you adopt the standards tonight. And thank you for controlling the great weather. As you know, it's very important. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you very much. That's our last speaker.
Thank you to all the speakers. And yes, we do control the weather. So with that, would anyone like to start with deliberation? Councilmember Hedges.
Yeah, I looked through the plans. I really like them. I really appreciated your attention to disabled access and also to the, the availability of getting stormwater under the parklets. Based on what's happened in the past, that's really important. So as far as I'm concerned, this is good to go. And I'm waiting to see what other council people have to say.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you through the mayor. I absolutely approve or support the approval of these standards. And I would just encourage you to use it as an opportunity to do another round of outreach. I support Mr. Simpson's recommendation about waiving the fees for the first year that Mr. Grimes supported as well. I think that's, it's a great hook. It's not the make or break or anything, but it'll make people listen. And you now have three designs that you put together addressing one of the big concerns that people had. It's money to do the designs, and it's also an investment of time. And as you mentioned, people going back and forth, am I getting approvals? It just makes you say, I give up, you know, if you have any, any reluctance. So I, I see a huge opportunity to come together and say, here's the next phase of the pedestrian mall, and here are all the great things that are happening. And because you told us you wanted this and we did it. Now, you can take this and customize it to what you need. And here, you know, here are the people that did those designs, so maybe you want to go talk to them about what to do. And maybe there's an opportunity for our friends at Prometheus and elsewhere to help fund the additional cost of doing that, because that's not going to be cheap either, or, or work together with the community. But it's a great education opportunity. It's also an opportunity to go out and find out why things aren't happening. So it was some of the emails we got said, you know, you should be able to put roofs on the, the parklets, or you should be able to put heaters in the parklets. And you can, you can do both of those. But I think, number one, people may not be aware, or they may have different reasons for not wanting to, but I don't know. And I think you probably have better insight, that it would be a great opportunity to ask them, why haven't you put this up? Why haven't you, to, to your point earlier, what, what can we do better? Because I think, as Mayor Lee has mentioned many times, this is a huge, unique asset. And I look forward to the boosters getting behind, doing cultural things and all the restaurants and things. But I think that's, that's certainly important. But I think removing the fees would be a nice, a nice hook. And maybe, you know, coming in with a mid-year, we're going to come in and power wash the streets, too, because we believe in this so much. Because that's the other thing we always hear, as you know. But anyhow, great work and look forward to seeing them implemented.
Thank you. Actually, before, before you go, I, I think it would be helpful to understand what is, what would the potential budget impact be for, you know, for a, for waiving the first year annual fees, let's say?
It depends if they're building a, so for, along the Ped Mall, each business will be waived the $530 review fee and the renewal and the annual fee, which is $408. So basically per business, we're waiving about $900.
And, and so how many biz, like per, if this, if we were to consider this for this fiscal year, what would the potential?
I guess if you have, let's say, 20 businesses on each block, would be, I can't do that math right now.
20,000?
Yeah. I'm sorry? That does not include their cost of building the parklets.
No, I think she was saying 20, 20-
On the impact.
Businesses total in one fiscal year would be roughly $20,000 if we already-
So I thought you said 20 per block.
Well, I don't know if every business will want to build a parklet-
That was my point, yeah.
Even if we waive it. They, for example, Urban Ritual, they have set up, they like the way that they currently have it set up, which is tables and umbrellas. They could choose not to-
Absolutely.
-build it. Because it's also based on your storefront square feet. So a lot of the smaller cutouts with, where the building's really deep, but not very wide in front, they may decide not, it's not worth it to them.
But I guess, I guess, but if we could just bring this back to the question, which is if we could get a ballpark number of, you know, say we get X number of, of permitted, issued permits that have gone through application and approval in one fiscal year, is that number 20? Is that number 10? Then we look at our permit structure, our fee structure, and then we can kind of ballpark what a fee waiver impact would look like. What, what is that number? Because I, you know, we are custodians of taxpayer dollars. And I think it's important to go through the exercise of understanding if we are to, to consider fee waivers, what is the budget impact? And I, you know, we did that when we first initiated. We, we have, we have made this, my previous council has made numerous decisions to provide subsidies to residents and business owners downtown, including waiving all of our parking fees for years during the pandemic. So there is clearly precedent for it, but I think as a matter of due diligence, it's important to get a number.
Well, that's what I was asking. Is it for new business? Is it for businesses who want to build a parklet on the Ped Mall only that we're waiving at four? So previously, they just have that sidewalk dining. I would say a good number would be 20 between the two blocks, because I don't think every single business would want a parklet even given the, a platform even given the choice.
I, I think that that, for me, from my perspective, that's, that's a helpful parameter to put. If the focus is really on looking at boosting the, the success of the parklet program in our pedestrian mall, then, then considering that number of 20, you know, times an estimated, you know, 900, let's call it 1,000, we're talking about $20,000. So I just want to make sure that we're putting a clear number on this, on this conversation because we are talking about the people's money, right? So with that, I will, I also have one other follow-up question, which is, there was a, there was a constituent who raised the question about worst hall. And I think there is still some questions about how the guidelines apply to, to corner lots and whether parklets are feasible. And is there any margin of policy opportunity here? Or are we truly constrained by the, you know, the regulatory safety requirements that, you know, that should be standardized? You know, I'm not interested in compromising safety to get a parklet. I don't think that's a good trade-off personally. But if there are policy opportunities and tweaks where we can kind of move in, in some margins to promote parklet success on corner businesses, I think that that's a worthwhile line in questioning.
I think there is room for council if they wish to allow businesses to have parklets on both sides if they're at a corner. Do note, as I said, that you are taking available spaces on parking, and that is a constraint for the downtown. On-street parking is quite
Okay, so, so, I mean, so it sounds like there is potential. It's potentially feasible. If I hear you correctly, that you're saying-
That's a policy that council can make a decision.
Okay, so it is potentially feasible within the, within the safety parameters to consider amending some of the guidelines to make corner, corner lot businesses able to, to build parklets?
Mm-hmm.
And that's a policy consideration that is not, at this point, contemplated in these guidelines?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those were my two clarifying questions. And would you like to move on
I appreciate the clarifying questions from the mayor. I think they are certainly informing this conversation. And I am interested in a, well, although, I don't know, I suppose it prompts another potential question, though. You know, given what you just heard, Mayor Lee and other council members, are, is, is there, is there interest in considering making a change or proposing to continue this conversation, to add a policy decision such as corner street extra parklets? Is that, is that something we're talking about tonight or another time?
I think we're asking for the ability to make minor adjustments like this. If this is something that council wants to do, we can, we don't have to bring it back.
Ah, yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I think we would need to bring it back. And so I heard a couple of things that I actually think that, that may warrant, if the council decides to move forward, that I think I would, I would prefer to return for, for additional direction. And so I think there's a variety of considerations when it comes to the corner parklets, if we use both frontages. I think we would want to look at something objective that could be applied evenly. We talked about downtown, but we allow parklets throughout the city. And there's a wide variety of corner situations. There's safety considerations. There's loading considerations, as Jennifer mentioned early, earlier. And I think that we want to make sure that we give those the full consideration so that we're equitable in how we apply the standards and that we don't end up with an unintended consequence. And I, I personally think that it would be valuable to have the council weigh in on how we develop those and how we land on those, because I do think it's impactful. And because there is an equity issue between these businesses and other businesses who only have one frontage, I would feel more comfortable having council give staff that direction than having staff come up with that and implement those, those requirements on our own. I also feel like for the Ped Mall, for the, the fee waiver piloting, I did have some questions, and I don't know, Jennifer, I don't, if it warrants returning or not. But I wasn't clear on whether or not, say, we do the pilot for a year and we waive fees for new parklets, how would that impact the existing parklets and their renewal fees for the folks who already paid? If there's 20 businesses that are restaurants, are they all sit-down restaurants that would take advantage of a parklet? Or are we just talking about food establishments? Do we need to do more of a survey that looks at the kind of restaurants and if they're the kind of restaurants that would have a parklet? And so when you're asking for numbers, I don't know how ballpark you want to be or how specific you would like us to be in terms of the kind of restaurants and the actual number. And if you want us to look at what's there and how we would treat the ones that are already there and already have some kind of outdoor dining that would be subject to a fee so that there's not someone who paid and now someone new coming in who doesn't pay. So I, I guess I would say that maybe those two things in my mind might warrant a little bit of more discussion.
And so I guess as a, as a follow-up to that, would you recommend that we approve the guidelines tonight, or that, or that we fold this into another more comprehensive, updated approach with, with more consideration? Because my, you know, I don't want perfect to get in the way of, you know, good and getting, you know, moving these things forward and people understanding, businesses understanding what rules they have to play by. And so my, if you're open to us moving forward tonight with direction to, you know, on these items that we want to continue to evaluate.
I think we could move forward tonight and we could look at those items without taking an enormous amount of time. Is that safe to say, Jennifer?
That is correct.
And I think we could come back to you fairly soon. I don't think these permit applications are coming in so quickly that we're going to get a ton of them, where if we decide to move forward with a pilot program, we're going to end up with, you know, 10 applications that then we're going to have to go back and revisit. And so I think maybe if we had to estimate, I mean, how many do you think we get, say, in a month's time?
So there are businesses that have been holding off that we can't process, because I know that this is coming down the line, and they are waiting to get a confirmation from council either way. And that's two businesses in the pipeline already.
Two?
Yeah.
In the, in the Ped Mall?
In the Ped Mall.
Okay.
And it is, I don't, they will have to review it. They will have to take a look at it. I am already setting up meetings, talking to each one of them individually. I'm sure that once I hear about this, they will take it back and decide if they want to move forward with it. It's really, in terms, again, I have two people, I have two businesses that are interested. One has a, a permit in now that we can't, we're not fully reviewing.
For parklets or for-
Parklet platforms.
So something to consider.
And, and just to make my, my position on the, the fee waiver clear, my, I think that, you know, I would approach this as we, we want to see the, the pedestrian mall successful. And so if we were to run a, you know, a pilot that waives fees for new parklets, I would want to offer fee waivers for this year to existing parklets as well, because I, you know, we, it doesn't make sense to penalize the, the, the early adopters, right? That, that what's logged through, you know, the first draft of our guidelines. And, and so, you know, that's kind of how I would think about it in terms of, you know, looking at those two blocks and the-
at those two blocks, and the pilot, you know, subsidy, you know, incentive, discount applying to new and existing for, you know, a said period of time. So you could move forward with the adjustments to the standards and the restructuring of the permits with the fees on hold, apply that renewal fee also on a hold for the same amount of time, and then direct us to come back with standards for corners. Great. That captures my idea. Thank you. Councilmember Hedges has a question.
I was intrigued by the discussions on the corners, because I think in the vehicle code, there's a setback for each corner where you cannot have an obstruction for vision.
There would be, and so that's why we would have to explore it and make sure that it could be done safely, and there would be standards, and not every corner property would be able to have them. So it would probably be some of the larger corner properties, because they would be able to, they would have to be able to have adequate setbacks.
But as long as, I assume as long as the parklet didn't obstruct the view, but it might mean that people have to pull farther forward to see any oncoming traffic.
Perhaps, or it may be that they would have to have different types of railing or things that had less visual obstructions. And so that's something we would have to go back and confer with our public works staff on, and see, you know, what the feasibility is of moving forward with something like that, and what types of options we might have that would be available.
I recall it's a question in DMV tests about the setbacks from the corner for parking, and I think it's at least one car length.
Yeah, and I mean, when we think about our site triangles for corners, for other kinds of obstructions, it's 25 feet, so that's where that 25 feet comes from. But it can be, there can be some level of variation in some situations.
Yeah, we've got to figure that out before we let, okay.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julian Denise. Thank you, Julian Denise, for your presentation tonight. Appreciate it.
Jennifer.
What was that?
This is Jennifer Chen.
Jennifer, sorry.
It's okay.
I had a page back. I got flustered. I would say that I am in favor of approving the guidelines tonight, and would just, coming back with the following. One, like an overview of if we waived fees for people who've already adopted these parklets and waived the fees for, you know, potentially other people, what that would look like. If that looked like it had a significant financial impact, maybe an alternative to that would be to waive the fees for the early adopters and, say, the next 10 to adopt, or to put a permit in for the PedMall, just because we want to try to get people to get going and start filling the mall. Secondly, I would support a corner lot being able to do multiple permits, meaning a parklet on one side on the PedMall, for example, and sidewalk parking on the other, but I think maybe not two parklets. And again, I can think that really has to be weighed out to see if it's even feasible. But I would support them being able to have, as a corner lot, two different types of permits. As far as utilization of side streets, something that you see a lot in Europe, and, you know, it's been a long time since I lived in Europe, but one thing you do see is if the PedMall is not being utilized by all the people that are on the PedMall, after a period of time, like six months or a year, they give the opportunity for people who are on the side streets and within, say, a half a block, to also put, you know, parklets in the PedMall itself. And I think that might be something that is interesting at some point, meaning if we have a closed street and we have a coffee shop four doors down on Third, if we reach a certain point, we only have 40%, 50% utilization of the PedMall, if the coffee shop says they'd like to go put two parking space parklet around the corner, that might be something that's feasible. And it would be interesting, because, like I said, I've seen this work in Europe. And so, you know, ultimately, we want the PedMall to be successful, we want it to be full, not sparsely, you know, 40% occupied. And so I think maybe something we could be doing now as an outreach is talking to, you know, the store, the restaurants, say, maybe a half a block up on either direction of the PedMall, and see if there's people that say, yeah, you know, if that opportunity arises, sure, I'll have to have a, you know, waitstaff walking 200 yards every time they go serve, but you might find that there's even more interest there. And I don't want to, ultimately, I think the goal of us should be to get as many people out on the PedMall as possible, and so that might just be something to kind of start putting the feelers out now. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I think I agree with general comments that have come out of this discussion in terms of approving current standards, but seeing an item come back to discuss the fees and corner lots. I would just also note that with regard to looking at this later, to incorporate more inputs, feedback, et cetera, as some have mentioned in public comment, I guess, I think it would make sense to review activity at some point. I would think, though, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, you know, we really haven't even gotten everything in yet. So I guess, to me, I think we would need some time before we would revisit and look at how things have been going. A public commenter mentioned October. I guess to me, I'm thinking something like October of 2024 would make more sense to me, because, you know, this equipment will get put in, the city's equipment and infrastructure will be put in around the end of this year, early next year, and so that's not even a year with the materials in. So to me, I think, like, after a spring and summer in which we kind of see the realized PedMall, I think at that point, it might make sense, perhaps, if other council members may have a different thought. But that's, I'm in favor of, you know, looking back and reviewing and bringing in more inputs, but that's, I think, where I'm at on that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just had a clarifying question about the fees and what we were agreeing to tonight. Are we agreeing to waive the fees, or are we agreeing just to do the standards and come back in a month? Because my-
I think that that's the, that is an outstanding question. So if you want to clarify your position at this point, that would be helpful.
I would strongly encourage us to agree to something tonight as a pilot, or we could do it up to X number, because if we come back at the end of August and say, now we'll waive the fees, you've already had the designs out there for a month, and to try and have that, you've got one chance to go talk to people. Here are the new designs, here's the incentive, not discount, but incentive. I think it's all got to get packaged together, and it's got to be done now, because it's going to take a while. So I would want to see something approved tonight.
Councilmember Hedges?
Looking at the resolution, number six, the city council authorizes city manager approve minor administrative updates. Could we include end fee schedule?
No, because I think that the changes of the fees would likely require a public hearing. That's why this is a public hearing item tonight. And I also, you know, have a suggestion with regard to the fees. You know, one thing you could do, which was mentioned, is simply hold off on approving the fees tonight, because if you did that, that's simpler than adopting the fee and then coming back later and figuring out how to waive them. So if you wanted to do that, that's relatively simple, to change the resolution to excise those portions, and then we could come back later with approving the fee and also a method of deciding how the fee should be waived in certain circumstances, depending on council direction.
So would exempt number two, then?
Exempt number two.
The amendments to the comprehensive fee schedule to include the permit fees, the parklets, and the pedestrian mall?
So in the resolution, it's section five. I get that, you know, on the screen, it is section two.
I see.
But in the resolution, if you, the council wished to, you could move the staff recommendation, which is the adopter resolution as described in the agenda, except to remove section five of the resolution, which addresses the adoption of the fee and the associated recital, and then also remove exhibits D and E, which relate to the approval of the new fees. Then that can be brought back late, at a later time, for the council to consider.
I like that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you saying that it's legally impossible at this stage with this public hearing to make a determination to waive the fees?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that what I've heard is there's some future discussion, I think that's desired, on how to waive the fee. Fee waivers are, you know, will happen from time to time, based on council direction, but I haven't heard a majority of the council direct, here's how the fees are to be waived, because there's been some discussion about the early adopters and those that have already paid the fee, and how would a fee waiver take into account those types of applicants? So I haven't heard a kind of unified direction from the council.
If we can make the sausage tonight, I think that we should, even if we're tired and we need to slug it out. Because I really do agree that we want to roll this out with fees clarified, and I don't want to miss the opportunity for the education that we're doing with the county $100,000 grant, which will fold in significant outreach to businesses and education to businesses. And so that's, you know, that's on the docket, and it's going to happen. If we miss this window, it would be a real shame to be able to say, with, you know, with our new three templates and the education that we're providing, that we also have an incentive program that they can opt into with waived fees. So my strong opinion is that we, upon adoption of the guidelines, that we agree to waive fees for the pedestrian mall, for all new applicants, and that includes the application, that includes the annual fee. And for any businesses that have already gone through the application period, that they would get a credit or something, you know, in terms of their renewal period, that their next fee that's renewed within this window that we set, is it two years? I think two years is a good idea. Do we like two years? Give me two years, one year?
So fees annual?
Yeah, it's an annual fee.
So I would say you waived the fee for renewals for one year.
Waive their fee for renewals for one year. Why not two years? If we're doing a two-year pilot.
I thought we were going to waive the fees on the new businesses to get them started.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we go for two years for existing businesses?
Because-
I'm trying to keep it even.
You're trying to keep it even.
Make sure everybody doesn't feel like they've lost something, because they either went too early, or they're another void now.
So how are you keeping it even for the businesses that already-
Well, explain to me how your proposal is keeping it even, and then maybe I'll go for it.
Okay. So my thinking is, say, we adopt this tonight, right, that we set it as a two-year fee waiver, that any business that's renewing within these two years, or that's applying within these two years, has fee waivers. Is that, just keep it simple. Is that simple?
How did we get to two years?
Yeah, I'm not understanding that either.
Well, because I guess what, I was getting to two years because I was envisioning that this, a successful pilot would be implemented over two years, which would give us time to get the furniture in place, do the rollout of the education and the grants, see, you know, see the incremental improvements and changes, not just over one year. You know, one year's gone in a second, and then, and really boost up, you know, it's, we're talking about small dollars here. We, you know, normally, we're talking about big dollars. This is small dollars. We could, you know, this is maybe $50,000 over two years.
Jennifer, do you agree with that, $50,000 over two years?
If we estimate it 20 businesses per, in the two-block-
I don't know, based on business changes, I don't know that time, it's really hard for me to make that guess, too. And some, again, some of the businesses may not, still may just decide to put tables and chairs and not build a platform.
And that's fine, too. So where are we getting stuck? Let's make the sausage. What's, what are you thinking?
I'm still sort of stuck on one year.
I'm thinking one year, and here's why. Because the idea is to get people involved quickly. And if you say, we're going to do this for two years, well, then, I'm going to wait and see, because I don't want, you know, there's no risk to me. I'd almost, and that's kind of what I was suggesting with just like, the other approach is, we're going to waive the first $40,000 worth of, you know, permits, and that's that. And once that number's hit, then we say, that's it. And that might mean that it goes for 14 months before we hit it, but at least then, you know, you're pulling people to act. And that's my only concern about, if I'm being really frank, that's my worry about with two years.
Okay. I can live with one year. Do we got one year?
One year, yes.
One year?
Agreed.
Okay.
So that's both for the new as well as the existing.
I'm okay with that. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
So I'm a little confused.
And I don't blame you a bit.
So is it one, just on the pedestrian mall, or for our entire, okay.
We're talking about pedestrian mall.
And for the existing, are you saying that businesses with exist, because I don't have built parklets on the pedestrian mall, so there's no existing fees?
But maybe they have an encroachment-
They have the sidewalk for a she-
Right, sidewalk, and they want to continue that.
So you want to waive that if they have already paid for the renewals?
Yes.
Correct.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. And then to come back with an examination of the corner options throughout the city, throughout the, yeah. Is that, do you have what you need?
Yes.
Good sausage making.
Thank you. I think we made pretty good sausage tonight.
Let's have Prasanna tell us how to get there.
And please, let's make a marketing package.
Motion and a resolution.
So I call for a motion on the floor.
If I can clarify, so the council is really moving the staff recommendation as it is, but then in the resolution, directing the waiver of the application fee and the renewal fee for a period of one year?
That's true.
Okay.
So you would insert that in five?
Yes.
Okay.
I make said motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Okay. Boosters, go market.
Okay. It is close to 11:00. I want to check in with folks, do we need another break? Not speak now or forever hold your peace. Keep, we're going? Keeping going?
I don't know. Do you need a break?
Okay, we will carry on.
I'll call for a break.
Well, do you want a break? Okay. How's our staff doing? Does our, does our staff need a break? We need a break? Keep going? Okay. Okay, let's keep going. We are on new business, item 24, zoning code amendments for city projects, modifications to planning applications, and height limitations and exemptions, ordinance introduction. We have a presentation from our principal planner from Community Development Department, Ms. Julia Klein. from Community Development Department, Ms. Julia Klein.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Julia Klein, principal planner with Community Development Department. I have item number 24 this evening. It's an ordinance introduction regarding changes to the, to the zoning code pertaining to city projects, modifications to planning, to approve planning applications, and height limitations and exemptions. So I do have an agenda slide, primarily just to introduce, you know, the different slides that will follow. With the first slide, this is an introduction. And then with the subsequent slides, we'll go ahead and go through an overview of the zoning code amendments. And toward the end will be the recommendation and next steps. So the first group of code amendments is intended to streamline the review process for city projects. Currently, the zoning code requires P C, or Planning Commission, review for both large and minor city projects, which add time and cost. Through this code amendment, there would be an option to streamline review, streamline the review process, and potentially save time and money. It does this by allowing exemption for certain type projects. As outlined in the staff report, these include play structures or pump stations. It would also allow the zone administrator review and decision on minor projects, and provide an option for the city council to require fewer public hearings by multiple commissions before making a recommendation to the city council. So currently, that option is not available through the code. For minor projects, this would reduce the number of public hearings before different commissions. And then for large projects, these are the major projects as worded in the code, the city council would still have the ability to require review through multiple commissions before making a formal recommendation to the council. So that power would still be retained by the city council. The next group of changes pertain to modifications to approved planning applications. These include both development projects by private sector as well as city projects. So currently, the zoning code language is not clear regarding the different types of changes that may be necessary. Either during construction or through the building permit process, sometimes it's necessary to make changes to the project plans that are different than the approved planning application plans. With the proposed code change, it would provide a clear differentiation between the different types of changes. There's three levels, and the review paths, the review bodies that these changes would be reviewed through. So, you know, there's a level for building permit review, zone administrator level review, planning commission, or city council review. So this slide shows the proposed distinction between the different levels of review with simple changes that are in substantial conformance with original approved planning application going through a building permit process, so just a building permit. For minor changes, and there's a list of criteria in the draft ordinance, so projects that are proposing minor changes would be subject to planning application review process, but that's reviewed and approved at the zone administrator level. For major changes, and these are typically changes that have more significant impacts to the site plan or to the building design or to the uses on the property, or trigger new or increased environmental impacts, these would be subject to planning application review at either the planning commission or city council level. And one note I wanted to make is that through this code amendment, it would allow the zone administrator to have discretion in reviewing the cumulative changes that are being proposed for a project, and determining what level modification it fits into, and then the review process for that, the review path for that. And then the last group of changes pertain to building height limitations and exemptions. So currently, the different types of elements of a building that are exempt from building height measurement is located in a section that's called use in bulk, which is not intuitive and not easy to find. Most people don't know that it's there. Additionally, the current list of exemptions was last updated in 1981. It's not reflective of rooftop elements or mechanical equipment that may be needed in newer buildings or in existing buildings that are in need of upgrading. So the proposed amendment would retitle the section to height limitations and exemptions, so that it's clear. It also proposes a list of types of, types of elements that would be exempt from building height, some of which are listed in the slide, but they're also listed in the draft code and in the staff report. So I won't read them here. It should be noted that through this amendment, the zone administrator would have discretion to review those proposed elements that are above the building height, and would have the authority to determine whether those elements should require additional review either at the planning commission or the city council. So there is some discretion that's applied on a case-by-case basis. And then this slide is a summary of collaboration, public noticing, and public comments. So in drafting these proposed code amendments, Community Development Department worked with Parks and Rec, Public Works, and City Managers' Office staff. The noticing is listed here, but the legal noticing was published in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and that's required for all public hearing items for code amendments. Additionally, the staff did not receive any public comments prior to this meeting. So just wanted to point that out. And at the planning commission meeting, which was held on May 30th, I'm sorry, May 9th, 2023, there was also no public speakers and no written comments. The commission voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend a city council adopt the ordinance as drafted. And here's the recommendation from the staff report. I will not read it. And the next steps are, so this is, this meeting tonight is the first reading, and it's the introduction of ordinance. The second reading would be scheduled the next city council meeting. And that meeting would be for ordinance adoption, assuming that the council supports it to this evening. Following that adoption hearing, you know, if it is adopted, then the ordinance would become effective 30 days afterwards. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you so much for a thorough presentation, Julia. Who has questions? Wow. That means you did such a great job. I did have one question, just for the sake of in public education. You know, I, I am thrilled to see this move forward. And I guess there's a part of me that wants to see our codes updated to allow for some flexibility. And so there's this sort of balance of, of including, you know, things like antenna and all the various new technology that, you know, we hadn't foreseen 20 years ago. But also, I worry what's going to happen five years from now, where there's this new thing that has this new word that hasn't, wasn't included. And are we going to get stuck there? And so I wonder, you know, how are we contemplating? And how are we contemplating building in some, you know, additional flexibility? Knowing that there's innovation, you know, we're living in the hub of innovation. There's new building practices coming online all the time, and new words, literally, new products that have, have, you know, are being baked and we'll, we'll see in the coming years. And so how are we treating the code update in terms of allowing and supporting that kind of flexibility? And not being, you know, entrapped with these words that are here on the page today?
So through the code, the authority that you're granting the zone administrator will allow, you know, the zone administrator at staff level to apply discretion in reviewing, you know, a future element that we cannot contemplate today. But normally, what you would go through is a logical process. You know, this element that's being proposed in the future, how similar is it to other elements that are already on the list? And so there is some discretion where staff feels that it would be helpful to get planning commission and city council input, we would bring that forward. And so that ability is also still there within the code.
Thank you. That was my question. Appreciate it. And it's time for public comment.
We have no speakers.
Okay, we will close public comment. Can I call for a motion? Or would anyone like to give any comments on this?
Through the mayor, I would be ready to make a motion.
Excellent.
I would, I just wanted to quickly comment that I viewed a recording of the planning commission meeting. And so I feel like a lot of the questions I had were addressed in that meeting, and I'm comfortable with moving ahead. Thank you.
Did you want to put that on the mic?
I think these changes are overdue. I'm very happy you're making it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Appreciate your work, Julia. Thank you. And, and to CDD, a lot of work went into that. You, too, Christina. Okay, moving on to municipal code amendments for new development parking garage security requirements, ordinance introduction. We have a presentation from Rendell Bustos, senior planning, Community Development Department, or senior planner, Community Development Department.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. Rendell Bustos, senior planner in CDD, providing a brief staff presentation on code amendments pertaining to garage security code requirements. So just an overview of the topics I'll cover in this presentation, which is the purpose of the amendment, as well as the existing and proposed, proposed code language, as well as public outreach. So starting with the purpose, this code amendment is to Title 23, specifically the Building Security Code, which provides safety and security standards for new development as well as alterations to existing buildings. Specifically, this amendment is to section 23.54.030 for parking garage security. And the overall purpose of this amendment would be to reduce perceived barriers to housing production in mixed-use settings, to facilitate housing in those projects, and facilitate provision of onsite parking. Lastly, staff wanted to allow for some degree of flexibility for project-specific circumstances while still meeting minimum security code standards. So I'm looking at the existing code shown here to the left. CDD and police department staff have found that the existing code has some of the effects listed here on the right-hand side, which are that it requires full-time, you know, at-all-time separation of residential parking, and thus does not address mixed-use parking requirements. And so in practice, this has resulted in multiple gates in a secure, in a single garage where mixed-use parking is proposed, and this has prevented mixed, mixed use and shared parking opportunities. And so in contrast, the revised code would allow and address mixed-use parking, and would also still address all residential projects by specifically allowing both residential and non-residential uses in a single security area, and would allow a single gate to enclose all spaces, and would thus allow shared parking. And so putting the effects side by side, staff has, you know, prepared this amendment to particularly address the unwanted effects of the existing code. And so regarding public outreach, staff held a community meeting on May 25th, where staff provided an overview of the code amendments, as well, as well as other amendments that's being processed by police. There were a total of about four attendees, where most of the comments and questions raised were focused on general security requirements. Regarding public comments, staff received one public comment expressing support, specifically supporting the allowance for visitor parking to be within secured, within secured areas. And in addition, staff fielded questions from two members of the public after the packet was released to resolve their initial questions on how the code would allow their projects. And so to conclude, staff is recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend the municipal code pertaining to parking garage security, and determine that the amendments qualify for a categorical exemption. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Rendell. Questions from council? Oh, so quiet. Okay, I'll save my remarks for later. Would, can we open up for a public comment?
We have no speakers.
Okay, we will close public comment. Would anyone like to provide remarks?
Thank you through the mayor. I just want to thank Rendell and staff. This looks like an elegant way to grant more flexibility to mixed-use projects. I thought the agenda report was comprehensive, and I'm comfortable with moving ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Lorraine, I mean, Hedges?
We viewed one of these problems at a previous meeting with the Drager's development, and I think this is a good fix for it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I concur. I am very pleased to see this come forward. It's, it's one of, it's one of those great examples of we, we see something that's not working, and we move forward and fix it. And it didn't take 43 years. So that's a win in my book. So thank you, Rendell. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to adopt the municipal code amendments for new development parking garage security requirements ordinance.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, we're getting through this. Thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda, we have new business, item 26, Concar Passage Mixed Use Project Vesting Tentative Map and Development Agreement Execution Extension Request, ordinance introduction. We have a presentation from Rendell Bustos, our senior planner, and Carol Johnson, contract planner from Community Development Department. Thank you for sitting with us.
Thank you again, Mayor Lee. Rendell Bustos, senior planner, joined by Carol Johnson, contract planner, together providing a brief presentation for extension requests related to the Concar Passage Mixed Use Project. So some background with the Concar Passage project, the project location. Concar Passage is located at the existing Concar Shopping Center, bound by Concar Drive, South Grant Street, South Delaware Street, and Highway 92. Site has a parcel area of 14 and a half acres, and has a general plan land use designation, as well as a zoning designation of TOD for transit-oriented development. The project was approved in August of 2020, and is a mixed-use development with five main buildings over two levels of parking. That consists of 961 residential units, 40,000 square feet of commercial uses, and over six acres of open space. The approved entitlements are listed here, which included a development agreement. And so I'll cover a little bit more on the development agreement, or DA. So some of the terms of the DA, the applicant's main benefits are that it allows a 12-year term. That's the existing DA. And thus, thus would allow phased construction, and would disallow the city from applying regulations that are adopted after execution of the DA. In exchange for these terms, the applicant is obligated to a $7.5 million financial contribution toward traffic improvements, as well as construction of onsite amenities and two publicly accessible parks. And I did want to note, highlighted here in orange, that the DA is not executed, and has a deadline of September of this year for execution. And to cover the extension request, I'll pass it to, pass it to Carol.
Thank you, Rendell, Mayor Lee, and members of the council. So in terms of the project expirations... The original council entitlements were approved on August 17, 2020. Those incorporated a resolution adopting the vested tentative map, along with a site plan and architectural review, site development planning application as well. And then in a separate ordinance, the development agreement was approved. And there were two different expiration dates. By, by zoning code, projects, planning entitlements expire in two years from the date of adoption. However, in the development agreement, we moved that out slightly. At the time, the applicant didn't have ownership control of all the parcels in question, was not able to enter into that development agreement until such time as that ownership had been accomplished. And so it was anticipated that that could take a little bit of time. And so that date of September 30th... of September 30, 2023, was written into the development agreement. Prior, you know, as the two years began to conclude, it was understood by the developer that he needed some extra time. So he did apply for one, one-year extension through the zoning administrator to the vesting tentative map, and that also carried the other planning entitlements forward. There was no change at that time to the development agreement. Now we're almost at the inclusion of that, conclusion of that one-year extension, and so another application was made for a two-year extension to the vesting tentative map, and then also a two-year extension to the development agreement. Their state law allows up to a total of six years for vesting tentative maps and subsequent extensions, so we're fine in that regard. And then, after the planning commission action on this item, the applicant flagged a condition of approval that also required amendment in order to achieve consistency, and that is Condition Number 61. And that condition required a $2.2 million fair share contribution for the traffic, potential traffic impacts of the project, but only if the development agreement was not executed within three years. And at the applicant's request, staff supports his request to extend that to five years. So it would align the Condition Number 61 with what he's asking for with both the tentative map and the development agreement extension. So with that, the planning commission did consider this item, and except for the modifications to Condition 61, which we really think are just a clarification, and they did recommend approval 5-0, we received no, excuse me, no comments from the public during the planning commission hearing. So the next steps, staff recommends approval of the resolution to extend the vesting tentative map, as well as the ordinance for the development agreement, and approve that. Second reading of the ordinance would be on your August agenda, and then the ordinance would become effective 30 days after adoption of the ordinance.
Thanks, Carol. And so to conclude, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution and introduce an ordinance as stated in the agenda. So that concludes staff's presentation. I did want to note that the applicant is present this evening, and will have some brief remarks.
Thank you, Rendell and Carol. I appreciate the report. Mayor Lee and members of the councils, good to see you again. It's been three years since we've seen each other. And if you remember, when we had the approvals in August of 2020, we were in the midst of the pandemic. We'd just come out of the lockdown, but we're still doing meetings virtually. So the hearing was actually a virtual hearing at that time. So as we went through the project, I do want to clarify a couple of things over the last three years. So we do have, what in our business we call site control, meaning we have agreements in the property. So I just want to clarify that we do have agreements, and of course, through your process, all of the landowners have been not only informed of the process we're going through, but had to sign the applications as we're going through, just so you know that there's what we call site control. The reason why we didn't close on the property until a trigger date, which was this year, was there was a lease with the Ross store, which you're probably familiar with, that's still on the site. And that lease was going to expire in August of this year. That lease is currently under negotiation of a possible extension based on our development teams and our partnerships' recommendation that we take another year or two to evaluate the market. Since 2020, I know all of you are familiar with the market conditions we face. We've seen extraordinary inflation in the market, certainly in the construction costs. We're seeing that starting to quell a bit, and we're happy about that. But we've also seen supply chain issues, which still make it difficult to deliver projects in a timely manner. And of course, over the last year, in an effort to quell that inflation, we've seen a doubling, in some cases tripling, of interest rates, depending on what benchmark you use. So it's made our conditions very difficult, especially in a market that has not seen, unfortunately so, not massive increases in rents at the time. So we're hoping for some correction in all of those conditions over the next couple of years. We're not the only one that are facing those conditions, so I'm sure you've heard them. But we just ask your indulgence a bit as we continue to move forward of this project. We're deeply committed to it. Brookfield Properties is our partner. They're one of the largest fund companies in the world, and they're very aggressive about wanting to move forward with this project under the right conditions. Unfortunately, at the time, it's not. So we ask for your support, the staff recommendation, and our request for an extension for the next two years. And I'm open for any questions, and we also have our land use council available if there's any questions that I can't answer on that front. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council questions? Deputy Mayor.
Good to see you.
Good to see you again, too.
My one question, the development agreement, if I read it correctly, still ends at the same time. It just moves from a 12-year to a 10-year.
Yes, an important clarification. Thank you for asking that. We decided going into this, our initial request, which held all the way through the process, was that we didn't want to extend the term. So we just asked, we're not asking to toll the agreement, we're just asking for an extension of the execution date, not the end date.
Okay, great. And then you made mention in the slide, but didn't talk to the cost escalator. If you could explain that.
Through the mayor, Deputy Mayor. Yes, staff is supportive of the applicant's request to modify Condition Number 61 to five years rather than the current three years, but in doing so, we have requested, and the applicant has agreed, to apply a cost escalation factor similar to what we do for other construction, excuse me, projects using the ENR cost index, and that would, the escalation would begin this August of 2023, annually thereupon.
Okay, great. Thank you. My questions are answered.
Thank you through the mayor. I have another question or two likely for staff related to Condition of Approval 61. I suppose it could involve the applicant, but we'll see. I don't think so. Just, you touched a bit on this in the presentation, but just for clarification, the fee that is, that could be levied against the applicant here is separate from the agreed-upon $7.5 million in traffic improvements?
Yes, Mayor and council, that, it actually is an alternative fee. So if the development agreement is not executed within the timeline we've established, then the $2.2 million fair share agreement would apply. However, if the development agreement is executed in the stipulated timeframe, then the $7.5 million would be paid. So it's an alternative fee, not a cumulative fee.
Yeah, but would you say, is it possible that it could be an additional fee if, for example, the development agreement was not executed by, you know, a certain period? At the moment, it appears to be three years, for example, but then the agreement is executed, you know, four years after the, you know, the stipulations in the current agreement? Would the applicant have to first pay that fee and then pay the same $7.5 million?
If I could, the way this condition is proposed to be amended, it would align it to the current, or the requested timeline for the development agreement. So if the development agreement is not executed within the timeline that the proposed extension would allow, then another ordinance amendment would need to come before the council, and at that time, you could evaluate whether or not another condition, another amendment to Condition 61, excuse me, would be warranted.
I see. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Right. So it is an alternative, then? If we go ahead with the suggested language change, and the development agreement is executed within five years of the initial date, there would be no, there would be no alternative fee applied. We would stick with the $7.5 million as agreed.
That is correct.
And with the schedule of that, is that changed based on what's being proposed tonight with regard to a, you know, an extension of the vesting tentative map and the development agreement execution start? I guess, like, I guess in a way, it is because the first payment, I believe that we have an Exhibit B, right, in the development agreement? So the first payment related to traffic improvements kind of is paralleled with the execution of the development agreement itself?
Well, it's tied actually to the phasing of the project. So it's tied to specific performance standards. The payment of the $7.5 fee is broken down over several phases of the project, and that is tied to the stage of construction, the number of units that are constructed. And so, when the, if the start date of the project is moved out, then, you know, commensurately, everything else will move out as well.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, let's open this, okay, let's hear from Councilmember Hedges.
So I think I got a little confused in this whole process, actually, that was a question I was going to ask, that Adam asked. But, so, at any point, does the $7.5 million go away? That'd be the way I'd ask the question.
Yes, and through the mayor, the $7.5 million would go away if the development agreement is not executed.
Okay, that's good.
And if we don't approve it.
Yeah. I just didn't want to, that's going for some projects that are very dear to my heart, and I think yours, too. So that's very important. The question I have is, when do we expect to have a shovel and the dirt in this project?
Councilmember Hedges, so we actually spent some time with the planning commission going through what we thought was a reasonable schedule, given that the two-year delay, and that was that we're looking at a Phase 1 construction that could start in the second quarter of 2026, and then ultimately, well, and if you'd like, I could get you through the details, but ultimately finishing the project by 2030. There was some importance around meeting the RENA housing cycle, your housing element housing cycle, and what we tried to do was to show a development schedule that we could meet based on, assuming there's demand and we can move forward of the project, that we could meet that schedule and have the project complete by 2030.
There's an importance with housing people, too.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's open this up for a public comment. We have no speakers. Excellent, let's close public comment. And would anyone like to provide some remarks, or are we ready to make a motion?
I think I'd like to ask one more question of the developer, if that's okay.
Please, go ahead.
So I believe it's been two meetings back, but it might have been three, that, just when we were passing this project, that, kind of an 11th-hour idea, that if there wasn't the demand for single, for the amount of single-family housing, that we might take one of the buildings back and back to the drawing board of making it, you know, like condos or townhouses. What does that look like? I mean, where we are with the, with development being really halted by these high inflationary rates, do we, do you feel as though you're going to be able to find the demand for this amount of single-family, you know, units and studio apartments? Or do you think you're going to be coming back to us to reevaluate the mix?
So at the time, you know, it's hard to forecast where we're going to be next year and the next year. As a matter of fact, our crystal ball's been pretty cloudy over the last three years. I think a lot of people have been shocked by some of the waves we've been put through. There was a moment in time, and that happened to be a moment in time, where it felt like interest rates had fallen to the floor, which they no longer are, and we had offered that up as an alternative to reduce, I think it was 200 units, 200 and some units, by doing townhomes on the corner. We heard very loud and clear the night of the council hearing, by the way, that there were strong advocacy groups in the community at the council to build as many units as we could on the site. So we offered it as an alternative and found that it didn't resonate. And at the time, mortgage rates had fallen far enough that there was strong demand for sale housing. Right now, it's moderated quite a bit, and I'd say it's of equal footing to rentals. And we want to be careful of not picking the flavor of the month and coming to you with ideas every time the market changes. But at the time, when we come back in with our plans, which we hope would be towards the middle to end of next year, if there's something that comes up at that time, we certainly would bring it to your attention, but at the moment, we wouldn't plan on changing anything on the site.
Through the mayor, I'll just thank the presenters and the applicant for their time and sticking with us tonight. I watched a recording of the planning commission meeting and generally agree with the conclusions drawn then. We are certainly in an economic climate significantly different from last year. Denying this would likely increase the amount of time that this neighborhood and the city would go without closure on the next steps for this lot, not to mention, you know, potentially losing a project with 950 units, childcare, open space, and the traffic improvements, Councilmember Hedges noted. We still want to see housing built, and this proposal is a large part of our current pipeline, if not the largest. Not extending the backend of the Devon agreement should help, I think, avoid any unnecessary delay to development, and sends a message that the applicant is still interested in completing the project by the final deadline agreed upon earlier. So given that, each day the agreement's not executed is another day that could have been part of the project horizon for those reasons. And I just want to thank you for the clarifying answers on this new condition of approval number 61. I feel comfortable with the answers, so I will move to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk. Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you for everyone's patience. This is the time for our reports and announcements. I ask for the sake of our staff to be brief. Does anyone have any reports and announcements? Councilmember Hedges.
Just reports that several people have contacted me, actually, three, not several, regarding elimination of gas blowers in neighborhoods that are R1. Wonder if there's any change in attitude on that? And the other thing that people, at least from my district, keep wanting to raise the limit from $8 for our measure in the fall, I wonder if there's any changes on that? I was the lone vote on the no-site on that. I wanted to go for more, so that's why I'm seeing if we can revisit that and maybe go for a little larger chunk of money to get more work done.
Are you talking about the storm fee?
Yes.
For $8? We just approved it, though, for...
I know, I know, but I wanted to bring it up, that people, even tonight, walking around has brought it up. There's a lot of, a lot of people that would like to see a try for a larger amount, and I think we could pass it. But I don't see any recognition that anybody's interested in that.
I don't see a majority nodding here.
I don't see anybody.
I mean, I think, I would venture to say that everyone wishes that it was more and that it polled better, but I wasn't there during that meeting, but I trust that there was very diligent deliberation that landed you on this path that we just approved.
Yeah, my feeling was that with a dedicated group of people, we could move the needle on it. That's what we did with the flood issue, because it polled even worse than this originally. So I was hoping we could move the needle on it.
Do we have anyone who would like to consider? Okay.
No, I didn't think so.
Okay. I, I appreciate the line of questioning. And I think if, if we, if we felt there was a feasible path, that it would, it would have been on the table for sure. And, and then the other, the other topic you had?
I just wanted to bring up, because I had three different people contacting me about the leaf blowers.
Oh, is there interested in, in agendizing leaf blowers again? Okay.
I promise the constituent, I'd bring it up.
Okay, so I, I wanted, just for the record, under reports and announcements, I think that there was some, we are sort of in a unorthodox space of hearing a, a non-agendized item and asking questions to staff. Some of those questions had some embedded ideas. One of those ideas was that on August 17, when, when staff will return to us for a, an update on the storm water, this, the storm water maintenance plan and our wet weather system plan, that, that we wanted to see an analysis of an intermediate investment that, and potentially looking at use of the rainy day reserves. So I wanted on record to see if we, as a council, are, are specifically directing staff to bring that back on August 17. I am in favor of that.
I'm in favor.
Okay, great. We have unanimous.
That would be August 21st.
21st, okay. Excuse me, I got the date wrong. Thank you. August 21st. Nobody will be here August 17. Don't come on August 17. The other, the other idea that was discussed as part of another agenda's item was interest in, in asking the DEI task force to review and consider and weigh in on council compensation. Do we have a majority interested in that? Yes? Great. Wonderful. Any other agenda ideas or announcements?
I do have an announcement for more of a...
Sorry, more of a request. There is a, I can't go, I can't disclose who this is yet, but unfortunately, there is a firefighter from San Mateo County, sorry, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. It is way too late. I should just stop talking. But there's, there's a firefighter from San Mateo Consolidated Fire that is in end-stage cancer. And so I just wanted to call out to the, the council to be aware that most likely we'll have a large funeral sometime, they're thinking in the next two to four weeks, to honor this firefighter. And in the meantime, we hope that he is kept comfortable in his end stage, and I just ask for everyone's warm thoughts and prayers for his family. He has three young teenage children, so, yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I do have briefly good news to share. We, we have known for decades that the King Center and the King Pool is in perilous condition with, it is not ADA compliant. My kids, who learn to swim in the King Pool, would routinely be required to exit the pool every half an hour, almost, interrupting swim lessons and recreation because the filtration system is so antiquated that, that we have to manually test the, the water conditions. And because the, Drew told me how this works, the rate of churn or some, something to do with, you know, the, the water filtration system is not working well. And it, it impacts programming, it impacts kid, it cuts into time that could be used for swimming. And I've been working on raising funds and requesting congressional grants to, to help meet and match the city's fund to actually get the King Pool rehabilitated and, and make this investment so that doors can remain open. If we don't invest in it, unfortunately, we will be forced to close the King Center. And, and this week, we received, or was it this year? No, it was last week, we received really great news that our Congress member rep, Kevin Mullen, he made a substantial request in his budget allocation for $1.5 million. Unfortunately, there were a lot of concessions that needed to be made because it is a Republican-controlled House. And ultimately, the ask ended up at 80/50. And, and then our Senator Padilla put in a request for 1.5. So I wanted to just share this really great update. We don't know what the final number will be. This is not in the bag. We can't count on the money till it lands in the bank, but it's a really great step in the right direction. We have an overwhelming amount of support from community. I have not counted signatures on the support letter most recently, but I think we're probably over 500 right now. So the community is very much in support of this effort. And, and I, I hope everyone, when you see our Rep. Mullen and Senator Padilla, that you give them some extra appreciation for their efforts.
What are the fees to use the pool at the King Center?
Three bucks.
Yeah, we need to keep the pools open. I see too many kids swimming in the lagoon, lagoon, in my opinion. I see postings periodically, and we know the record of how many times we've been posted as one of the worst and most polluted waterways in the state.
So thank you for indulging me. And with that, oh, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to, we, we talked a moment about the storm water meeting tomorrow, and I just, I was advised that I would like to attend, and I was just going to ask other councilmembers if they were thinking of attending for Brown Act purposes.
So I'm going to be there.
Okay.
I don't think the Brown Act is a problem for us, as long as we don't sit together and talk about it.
Well, I think if it's, if it's you and me, I think we'll be okay. Is that all right?
Where's it going to be? The library?
Yes.
And at 6:30, right?
Six o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night. Thank you.